December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order. At six oh eight P M. I would like to ask. Our city manager to do the invocation tonight, and we will be led on the pledge of allegiance by our Robert Kim, our city attorney.
All right, can everyone bow their heads? Thank you heavenly father for giving us the permission to meet tonight. I asked for guidance and I asked for leadership and I asked for us to have a successful meeting tonight. In the name of the fathers and holy spirit, thank you.
Hey, can we all stand and place our right hands over our heart? Face the nearest flag or your video and come and say along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. Our staff, my fellow city council members and elected officials and the residents who are out there watching us. It's today started raining very intensely. And it's been windy. So we pray that everyone is safe and everybody's being careful when they drive home or drive to work. Or drive their, you know, families around. And just just take the proper precautions, go real slow, the roads are slippery, we don't want anything to happen. Okay? So we have a full agenda. We're gonna ask, just gonna have a quick reminder that presentations are limited to ten minutes. Up front. And we do have some communications, don't we, Mister City Clerk?
Correct, yes, we do.
Have you done the roll call? Go ahead and do the roll call first.
Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ray English.
Here.
Mayor Proton Valentine.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All are present.
Good. Is a, do we have the first presentation from Senator Bradford? Okay, we're gonna start, we're gonna proceed with Councilmember Monteros. Where is he? Where is he?
Your folks had me on all this time, I've been here.
Okay, welcome to welcome to City of Hawthorne City Council meeting today. And we know you're doing some good things out there, so we'd like to hear from you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor and Council, and I thank you for this opportunity to provide a legislative update as it's been the practice of me for the love of the years, representing the city of Hawthorne, first as your assembly person, now as your state senator that I've come before the council and the community to just provide a legislative update of the year that we just completed. As many folks know, our legislative year is from January to like the first week in September, our year ended this year on September. Then the governor had thirty days to sign all measures due to the pandemic, we were only asked to introduce twelve measures. Of those twelve that I introduced this year, eight made it to the governor's desk with one receiving a veto, I should say. And for all accounts, I had a pretty successful year with two of the pieces of legislation getting national recognition. I'll first start by S B two with S B two, which is better known as the Kenneth Ross Junior Police Decertification Act. Staying after a young man who was killed by Gardena police officers three years ago in the city of Gardena simply running away from police officers at Raleigh Park. This bill allows the state of California to join forty-six other states now in having a fair and transparent method of decertifying bad actors, bad officers who commit crimes and are breaks to public trust. The officer that shot Mister Ross was officer that I was unfamiliar with because he had transferred from Orange County Department where he had been involved in three questionable shootings there. This bill now allows us to remove the certification or suspend the certification of an officer who has done questionable criminal deeds. We can get rid of bad teachers, we get rid of bad doctors, lawyers, elected officials, even men and women of the cloth. But in California up until now, we couldn't have gotten rid of bad police officers. Shouldn't be easier to, for a barber to lose his license for giving you a bad fade or a beautician to lose her license for a bad perm, but officer who can take your life can simply quit the department and transfer to another department. This bill now ends that wash, rinse and repeat cycle that has existed in California for far too long. And again, allows us to establish trust in the community. Knowing that the men and women who represent them are doing the best and doing it in an honorable way. As we've just witnessed what's happening in the neighboring city of Torrance where over thirteen officers are now under investigation for racist and sexist and criminal behavior. So that's what S B two is, and again, it was named after Kenneth Ross Junior. A young man who senselessly, senselessly lost his life in Gardena. Next is S B seven nine six, better known as Bruce's Beach, it to receive national recognition. As you all know, Bruce's Beach was a piece of property that was acquired in nineteen twelve by Charles and Willa Bruce, African American couple who simply wanted to live out the American dream by establishing a facility for African Americans to adhere to the Jim Carl laws of of the day, separate but equal to allow African Americans to recreate like we all love to do at the beach. They opened up in nineteen twelve a bathhouse with a cafe and a lodge. From the day it opened, it was tremendously successful, so much so that they immediately were harassed by the K K K and other racist community activity, their patrons hit their cars vandalized. The facility was set on fire a number of times, but despite all of that racist behavior, that this facility thrived and and it was very successful for twelve years, so much so that six to seven other families bought homes, African American families, I should say, bought homes in the area. And had a thriving community to the point where Manhattan took it upon themselves twelve years later to use the law to commit a crime and take their property by eminent domain stating they needed to create a park. As we all know, a park wasn't built in that location for almost thirty years. The property was then transferred to the state of California, which held it until nineteen ninety-five, then we transferred to the county of Los Angeles, who currently is in possession of it and is a lifeguard station here. This measure now allows us to return the property to the descendants of Charles and Willa Bruce, the great grandson, Anthony Bruce. And so we just completed the deed and it was the state of California, now the county can finish it off by transferring the property. Next is S B five, six, seven, Determining Sentencing Act, it just requires a court and criminal sentencing proceedings proceedings to impose, the upper or maximum terms insufficient aggregate aggregated facts are first considered by the jury, you have to first present those facts, you just can't no longer say, let's give them the maximum simply because they were a gang member, you gotta prove those facts, and it further permits the defendants and other parties to dispute facts of record or present additional facts for the sentencing process, so it's gonna make our criminal justice system a lot more fair. Next is S B five, eight, six, criminal administrative fees, it just eliminates or reduces a lot of assessive fees that exist here in California that really creates a debtors prison for many folks who simply can't afford to pay them, I mean even expungement fees that you want your record expunged, but you can't afford to pay the fees, you can't do it, or your failure to appear in your assessed fee, so it reduces those costs that we found to be very unnecessary and very punitive on working poor people and so like I say, failure to appear shouldn't be fined, or if you had a medical or dental procedure and you 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 would have to pay for that, or a certificate of rehabilitation or getting your records sealed, you would have to pay for that. We remove those fees. Next is S B six, five, five, which is insurance diversity, it just simply spans. Our diversity within the insurance industry was authored by, well sponsored, I should say, by our insurance commissioner Ricardo Lotta. And it just requires insurance companies here in the state of California to provide an update of the diversity of their board and also the level of contracting and procurement that they do with minority owned, women owned and disabled veteran owned businesses, so it's gonna make our insurance industry far more equitable and fair. Next is S B six, nine, four, utility workforce diversity. It just requires our electrical utility companies who are working on wildfire mitigation and hardening of this landscape to consider hiring former incarcerated as well as conservation corps members, many of these men and women do the lion's share of the work when you talk about grid hardening in our fire prone areas, but once they're leave the corps or they're are free from incarceration, they can't, are not hired by our utility company. We're now encouraging them to hire these individuals. And next is S B twenty-six, Fair Pay to Play Act two point O. As you guys know, I authored S B two oh six two years ago, which was the first in the nation to allow college athletes to monetize their name, image and likeness. This bill just simply moved up the activation date to September of this year, our bill wasn't due to go into effect until September, January of twenty twenty-three. But with eighteen other states as well as the N C two A trying to implement bills that would water down what we initiated. We active moved up our activation date and it also now allows community college athletes to participate in this as well. And finally, I'll just wrap up with our budget accomplishments. I was able to secure a hundred and forty billion of direct funding to our district, sixty million for Cal State Dominguez Hills for infrastructure infrastructure improvements, fifty million dollars for Charles Street University School of Medicine and Science. That graduates probably the greatest minority medical professionals outside of H B C U. Ten million for the Martin Luther King Hospital, which is a hospital that even serves the South Bay area in a ten mile radius. Just with infrastructure and workforce development improvements there. Eight point five million for the Inglewood Market Street improvements, their facade improvements, especially in light of the Super Bowl coming in February and Olympics coming in twenty twenty-eight, six million dollars for Altissey Center, which is a steel program and a workforce development out in San Pedro, and one point two million for the Boys and Girls Club of Harvard City area, the Cheryl Green Center, and three point five million for the Black Worker Center in Los Angeles, and finally, one million dollars for the Diamond Institute at Cal State Dominguez Hills. So I will stop there, I don't know if I've used all of my ten minutes and there's questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time, so thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Senator. Anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hello, Senator Bradford, great to see you, thank you so much and congratulations for all your great work, obviously you've been doing a whole lot, very proud to see the eight bills that were signed and obviously pushing forward, I really appreciate all that you're doing for us in Sacramento. I wanted to touch a little bit on some of the cannabis bills. Were moreover, funding sources that would include funding for equity grants and fee waivers. As you are aware, the voters back in November passed a sixty percent voter approval for cannabis here in our city and our council and members have been pushing forward with that here more recently, last week, Thursday, we hosted our first working group committee that I chair along with members here from City Hall. And we've started the process and I'm just interested to know how we could maybe use some of these resources for our cannabis program, especially the equity grant and fee waivers, and it looks like there's twenty million in funding for equity grants and another thirty million just with regards to fee waivers for those who are looking to start a business and those, you know, that are sometimes in advance have that that opportunity and those that don't, don't. And so it's good to see that there's funding for for folks who want to start a business in around cannabis.
Yeah, thank you for asking that question, I failed to mention that, yes, I secured the fifty million dollars in total, as you stated, twenty million for equity program and another thirty million for fee waivers and and funding. I passed S B five, nine, five last year, which was the fee waiver program, but there was no funding in it, so this year we were able to put funding in it through a trailer bill, S B one, six, six, which now allows, again, people who have been impacted by the war on drugs in minority communities communities with high arrest rates for cannabis now to take advantage of that. If you are applying for a license and you need some assistance, you can apply for the fee waiver grant through the Department of Cannabis Control, I would just in a meeting with them last week and I will have another meeting with them tomorrow, further defining who these individuals are, because I'm sorry, the state has still not gotten it right, they continue to wanna provide this money to people who do not need it. And when I authored S B twelve, nine, four, which was the first social equity bill in the country, three years ago, we clearly made it for those folks communities of color that have been impacted by the war on drugs for the last forty years or having a higher arrest rate, so we wanna make sure those dollars are targeted, so we strongly encourage you to apply. You can also contact my office and we'll be more than happy to assist any of those individuals who are looking for fee waivers or equity grants.
Thank you so much, I'm gonna be making sure that our city attorney and city manager circle back and have some of this information for us for our next cannabis working group committee, thank you so much, Senator.
And if you need me there, I'd be more than happy to participate if my schedule permits.
I will hold you to that, thank you.
Councilmember Montero and then Mayor Proton Valentine.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, good evening, Senator Bradford, nice to see you again. I saw you last week, so not too long ago, but again, you know, congratulate on you and all you accomplished of the legislative year. Yeah, you have done a lot for our city, but I would encourage a little bit to bring us some money too, okay, cuz I see name of some cities there, but I don't see Hawthorne, so need to help us out, you know, especially with the facade improvement, you know Hawthorne Boulevard, so we need any money can come from the state is welcome to our city, okay?
I'm pretty sure your parents or grandparents have said many times, a closed mouth is never fed, you have to make the ask, so they are have made a ask, so we just say submit your request before April and they're considered on a, you know. Yeah, so yeah, just make the ask.
Okay, definitely will ask. I want you to, I want you to comment on something because there is a lot of talk over there about crime have increased, you know, all across the nation, especially even California and our city. So I want you to comment because some of people believe is because of the sum of the law that the legislature have passed that have put criminal on the street. Can you comment on that, please?
That's a real misnomer, truly, crime overall has decreased. Some of the violent crime has increased, some of the what you see the smash and grab stuff has increased, but overall crime in California has decreased since we've made some of the proposition changes as well as the legislation changes. And many folks wanna say, oh, now that, you know, you know, you've made some crimes a misdemeanor that more folks are committing crimes, that's so far the thing from the from the truth. What we've saw for the last forty years that we had over incarceration, that's why our prisons were overrun. And now that, starting under former Governor Jerry Brown, we started reducing the population in our, in our, in our prisons. Overall crime has not gone down over the last two years, overall crime has gone, I mean gone up, I should say, it has gone down in the state of California over the last two years and it's gonna continue to go around because we are the most heavily incarcerated state and country in the world, so it makes no sense. You know, that that has not been a deterrent to crime. Having jobs, having affordable housing, having fair and equitable communities, that is a deterrent to crime, not over incarcerating people. It's a little misleading.
Thank you, because there's a lot of bad perception on that, so thank you for that, thank you, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, thank you to you too.
Mayor Proton Valentine.
Yes, thank you, Senator Bradford, for your presentation and Merry Christmas. I wanted to congratulate you on S B seven ninety-six because that was an important movement that you actually led, you 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 were the leader on that. Many people participated in it, working to right a historical wrong. Returning Manhattan, the Manhattan Beach property to its proper owners who were discriminated, whose ancestors were discriminated again back in the nineteen twenties, so that was very important. And it was an important, it was an important accomplishment, I wanted to congratulate you for that. I want, yes, I want to add my request to those who've spoken before. Our small businesses need a lot of relief and I heard you say, submit the request before April, so I will be doing that. Our small businesses need a lot of relief, relief because of the pandemic, relief because of the 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 effects of the pandemic, many of which they lost their customers, they lost their workers and some of them are having a really hard time coming back from that. So whatever relief you can provide would be greatly appreciated. And as you say, make requests before April and how how do we do that? Just contact your office?
Submit it to the office, that's the process, yeah.
All right, we will, we will ask our staff to do that.
And I will also let you know, last year I authored a small business tax credit, so it was a hundred million dollars available to any business that rehired or hired new employees, and that was a hundred million and much of it went out so quick that we were able to secure additional dollars this year, so there is still probably, I'm pretty sure all the money's gone now, but we had over a hundred million dollars available to small businesses that you're concerned about that have have lost employees or who either rehired those that they had laid off or hired new, so we're still looking out for small businesses because it's the heart of you know, our economy, it's not the major corporations, it's the small business that employ the majority of people.
Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, likewise.
I'll just be brief, Senator, I just wanna thank you for your hard work, definitely appreciate everything you're doing for our community.
Thank you, appreciate you.
And thank you so much, Senator Bradford, for being here. I have to say, and and straight up, you know, I might have, I might have had like a difference in opinion a couple of things maybe that you put out there, but but the 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 only representative from our state, even in our county, that's come and talked to us is you, so I really appreciate you for letting me come in and regularly being here. And that's, you really do, you know, following through on what you said to let us know and communicate things and give us an opportunity to give you feedback here at at our meetings, in our house, coming to visit us, so thank you so much.
Thank you for opening your house to me and allowing me to do so.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, Mayor, and let me just say to Senator, to your staff, to your field reps and all of those that run your operation, your office. Grateful for them and look forward to the new year, the new year with hopefully lots of prosperity for the Hawthorne residents, thank you.
Without a doubt, maybe next year I get some M and Ms.
Wow, yeah, this is for sharing, it's for sharing, I'll share.
Right, thank you once more, thank you so much.
Happy holidays, thank you very much.
Mayor, Councilmember Montero, you have a presentation on Clean Power Alliance, go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. Before I introduce Ted, I just wanna say, the Clean Power Alliance, we are a member of it, is the largest C P A in California and is the renewable energy and we have been part of it for more than almost four years now, almost five years. And Councilwoman English used to represent us as the Board of Directors and since twenty eighteen, I've been on the Board of Directors and we have accomplished a lot of things, so but I don't wanna take away from the Ted presentation. So I'm going to do Ted, that is the Executive Director of the Clean Power Alliance. The local operated electricity provider for thirty-two communities and approximately one million customers with and serve almost three million people across Los Angeles, town of Ventura County, so we about, you know, thirty-two municipality and two counties, so Ted, Lorak is Executive Director, Ted, take over. Welcome, Ted.
Thank you, thank you, Alex, and hello, Angie, it's been a while, but it's really great to see you.
It's good to see you.
If we could pull up the presentation, that would be great, and while it's it's being pulled up, I just Alex asked me to come and provide a little update on what's going on with Clean Power Alliance, some of our local programs. What's going on with our rates right now and and in the future and talk a little bit about something, some things that are happening in in other cities right now with how they're addressing you know, environmental performance and climate change through something called the default rate. So and I wish I was in this building with you guys right now, so maybe maybe next year. So just quickly, I I wanted to mention, sorry if you could go to the next slide, please. Yeah, just some basics, a little bit about the programs that we've been running, including bill assistance. Some rate history and the default rate. Bill, bill and rate reductions that we look forward to in twenty twenty-two and our competitive position with S C E. And then, as I mentioned, some things that that other cities are doing. Next slide, please. So just as a reminder, when customers are you know, customers of Clean Power Alliance. There's two line items on the bill, there's the S C E line item, which is for delivery. And then there's the Clean Power Alliance line item, which is the source. If a customer, let's say in neighboring Torrance, is not on, you know, a member of Clean Power Alliance, that customer still gets two line items on the bill, it's just that both of those charges go to Edison. Here, one charge goes to S C E, the other charge goes to us. The charges are equal for all customers for that delivery charge for to S C E, regardless of whether they're with Clean Power Alliance or with Edison. But we're the source of the the energy and our energy generally is cleaner with more renewables than what S C E provides, but I think one thing, just as people are talking out there, we always have to remind folks that it's not an added fee, it's just a replacement for what you would be otherwise charged by Edison for for the actual electrons. Next slide, please. So we're a joint powers authority, a nonprofit governmental entity, thirty-two agencies, as Alex mentioned, with about a million customer accounts. We are now the fifth largest electricity provider in the state of California behind the three investor owned utilities and L A D W P. So we're, the the impact that we're having on our customers and on environmental performance is significant. And we now have more customers getting one hundred percent renewable energy than any other utility in the country. You could see the 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 area is pretty vast. You know, from northern Ventura County all the way down to the Palos Verdes Peninsula and out into the San Gabriel Valley, and also I would mention quite diverse. You know, we've got affluent beach cities and less affluent cities across the county, both in L A and Ventura. One other thing I'll note is that you, of those million customers, about twenty-eight thousand of them are are in Hawthorne. Forty-four percent of them receive some form of low income bill assistance from from us. Next slide, please. Just a quick bit on our local programs, we have a power ready program where we're working with some of your staff, actually on your city hall and its parking lot to design and hopefully install a clean energy backup power system for for City Hall because we know that the grid is more unstable these days and with climate change and extreme heat events that can put pressure on the on the delivery of power for a critical facility like like your city hall. We have Power Share, which is a community solar program and provides twenty percent bill discounts on top of already existing bill discounts for low income customers. Next month, sorry, early next year, we'll be introducing some incentives for publicly available E V charging stations and we look, hope to get some of those installed, there are set asides for disadvantaged communities for for those E V charging stations. And a whole host of other things, I wanna highlight this last one. We've provided over one million dollars in scholarship and workforce. We've provided over one million dollars in scholarship and workforce development programs in partnership with, with both our local community colleges as well as the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, training that good workforce in clean energy projects for, for the future. Next slide, please. So Clean Power Alliance has three rates that we offer both our communities and our customers. There's lean power, clean power and one hundred percent green power. They have different levels of, of renewable energy in them, forty percent, fifty percent and one hundred percent. And they come at different price points. Typically, lean power has been a little bit cheaper than Edison. Clean power has been right at parity with Edison and a hundred percent green power is at a premium. And we, we, you know, we offer those choices to both the communities to set their default as well as to any individual customer can change their rate at any time. Uh, next slide, please. So just a, a little bit about our rate history, so for the first three years, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we had the lowest rates available in the region. Hawthorne is on that lowest rate and we saved Hawthorne residents millions of dollars while providing a clean energy product. In twenty twenty-one, our rates became, including our lowest rates, did become a higher for the first time in conjunction with some rising SCE charges, something called the PCIA or exit fee and other increases to energy costs. It is important to remember though, as, as folks look at their bill, that only about a third of our, our, of, of that bill or the customer's total charges is, are charges and that is compared to about half the bill four years ago. The Edison rates on the delivery side, which pays for the infrastructure and the infrastructure upgrades, Senator Bradford just talked about that, is the fastest rising part of the electricity bill as we continue to invest in, in, in infrastructure. And as you'll see in the next couple of slides, our cost comparisons will fluctuate over time as both SCE rates and CPA rates change. And I'll give you an example of that in just a moment.
You have two more minutes, sir?
Okay, next slide, please. So the Hawthorne default rate, you chose the lean power and customers tend to stick with the rate chosen. And each city can change its default rate at the end of the calendar year. And I think that's the item, issue that, that Councilmember Montero wanted to bring to you. Next slide, please. What you could see in our default rates is that now fifteen and, and in twenty twenty-two, it'll be eighteen of our thirty-two communities will be on the hundred percent green power rate. With more cities considering that, that'll mean that about two-thirds of our customers will be on that one hundred percent green power rate. An important note is that low-income customers in the hundred percent green cities receive the hundred percent renewable eight rate at the clean power rate. So we, we subsidize internally that and that would be for forty-four percent of your residential customers. Next slide, please. So I talked about our rates being a little bit more expensive right now. In, in March of twenty twenty-two, that will change. Based on Edison's projections, we expect to see a bill reduction of about six percent or eleven dollars a month just for our customers. So you'll see that you lean power customers, as is most of the customers in CPA, in Hawthorne, will see the six point six percent rate reduction equaling eleven dollars a month. Next slide, please.
We have twenty seconds, sir.
Okay, I'm almost done. What this will mean is that in March, because SCE's generation rates are going up by over twenty percent, we will go from all of our products being more expensive than Edison to all of our products being cheaper. You'll see that while someone on an Edison base rate is going to go up by about thirteen dollars a month, our customers are going to see about an eleven dollar decrease next, next month. So the last thing, this is the last slide. As you've seen, more and more cities, because the differential between our three rate products has shrank, the more and more cities are choosing to change their default rate either to clean or a hundred percent green. I've thrown up some stats here. If a, a city like Hawthorne decided to do that, you'd see about a six percent residential customer increase, although for forty-four percent of your customers, that would be about a dollar. And it would imply about eleven thousand dollars for the hundred and twenty-three municipal accounts. And there's some very, some numbers on how important that would be for the environment. Let me just close by saying that Clean Power Alliance totally respects local community choice. It's a platform for you all to exercise the, the best choice that you think for your community. So we don't have a position on whether you should or should not consider changing your, your default rate. However, Alex just wanted me to, to come and provide this information. And if you were to be interested in doing that, we, we would need a decision in January. So with that, I'll stop and see if Alex wants to say anything or open it up to any questions.
Thank you Ted, I appreciate your presentation. I just want you to hit some critical point because, you know, when, when we discussed our last meeting, right, at the CPA, about the future of how the CPA is going in the near future, maybe merge the lean with the green, with the, the lean with the clean. So, so then you would be having the two default, the clean and, and the one hundred percent. And as our rate is going to be decreased, no, by that six percent that you mentioned and as, as Southern California Edison is going up, the, the difference between the clean and, and one hundred percent right now is about three percent, correct? So can you explain more about that, please?
Yeah, so I think one of the reasons that many cities are changing their default is that the differential between the three rates has really narrowed. When we started out, the differential between lean and clean was about ten percent. And now it's down to about three and a half. And the reason is, is that we've been developing many, many new renewable energy contract, projects. And those renewables are quite cheap right now and the more renewables we bring on, the, the cheaper that rate gets. And then the other thing is that because of state mandates and potentially federal mandates, the lean power product is starting to barely be at compliance and it's going to have to move upwards in terms of environmental performance over time. So there, at some point in the not-too-distant future, it's going to catch up with clean and therefore we're, we're trying to figure out how to, how to best manage that. I would like to always have a rate that is cheaper for those customers who, who want to, to do that. But right now I see that that's one of the reasons that folks are changing, is that that differential has really started to narrow.
And, and also hit the point about that our, our customers, our citizens of Hawthorne, forty-four percent are low-income families and, and they have been helped, you know, tremendously for this past five years, especially during COVID, that, you know, millions of dollars was given to a different program, CARE and FARA, right? And also that if we would default to one hundred percent, these families would not see their bill increase.
That, that's right, they'd see their bill about a dollar a month. And to your point about our, our COVID relief, above and beyond what the state provided and what the Public Utilities Commission provided, we provided two million dollars in bill credits. That's what, including thirty-two hundred customers in Hawthorne got write-offs of their bill during, during COVID. And we'll be allocating a bunch of, uh, over fifteen million dollars in the coming months to customers who were still impacted and still having trouble catching up on their electricity bills.
So my last question to you is just for the people that are listening, just explain the renewable energy, where did our power come from?
Yeah, so most of the, of the renewable energy we're buying is generated in Southern California. Whether that's, you know, we've got one project under development in, two projects under development in the Antelope Valley and most of the rest is in current, Southern Kern County, Riverside and San Bernardino. So we've, we, you know, it's hard to develop in LA County, as many of you know, but we definitely put a premium on developing as close to our, our customers as possible so we can invest locally and all, all but one of our projects is being developed under a project labor agreement because we definitely want to support the apprentices who are moving into becoming journeyman electricians.
Thank you Ted. I'll let my colleagues go. Uh, you mute, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray English and Mayor Proton Valentine, and that's it. Go ahead.
Thank you Mayor, uh, thank you Ted, great to see you too. I just love the turnpikes back in the back, your photo back there. You know, I, I, from the very beginning, when City Council chose to become an aggregate and partnered with CPA, we were just in the beginning stages of coming up with a name for it, right? And look how far we are already and how great it is to know that there's a second energy company that's procreating energy for the residents of Hawthorne at a lower rate than Edison. And how interesting it is that it's a nonprofit organization that's giving back to the community through rebates and other, other discounts. And so that's the capture of it all. It's not an electric company paying themselves first. And so let me just say, you know, kudos to Clean Power Alliance and all those members that are member, board member, agency members and continue to do the great work. We had talked about early on becoming a hundred percent green and this was something like, what, four years ago? And we started at the very beginning and like you said, oftentimes depending how the council starts, what they're, what they want their, their, their power to, to, to be, their participant rate, it usually follows in that, in that time. And now that we're some four years later, it's something that we should consider, like other cities have in, in looking to going even a hundred percent. So it's good to have you here, it's good to have that discussion. I think it's something that could be beneficial to all of us. And I think ultimately, the goal of all of the member cities is to go a hundred percent. So with that, I just want to thank you, good to see you and look forward to more discussion and I'm sure you'll have a decision before January. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Uh, yes, good evening. Wanted to ask you, what do you expect as far as rates are concerned? You, you did indicate that rates have been going down and I'm wondering, do you expect them to continue to go down?
Yeah, so I expect that, uh, that, that, that rate comparison of being, you know, all of our products to be cheaper, to be sort of only continue over the medium term. Things will fluctuate when you choose any point in time. So I expect the differential between our three rates to stay narrow. But I can't always guarantee that every month it's going to be cheaper than Edison. It's going to fluctuate and then Edison, in next year, our rates, Edison will then follow with rate adjustments in twenty twenty-three. So we're kind of, uh, you know, at any one point in time, we'll always be competitive and the differential between lean, clean and a hundred percent green will stay narrow.
And how is your reliability as compared with Edison?
Yeah, so we're, so Edison and the California Independent System Operator are the ultimate providers of the reliability services, that is to make sure that the infrastructure is working. We have the responsibility of putting the right amount of power on the system at the right time. And to do so with so much renewable energy, we've become very, very large investors in battery energy storage. We're now actually the third largest purchaser of battery energy storage in the state of California. What this allows us to do is use the very inexpensive, abundant, clean energy powered by solar, generated by solar during the day, charge those batteries and then at night, when the energy is more expensive and dirty, discharge those batteries so that people can have renewable energy even when the sun's not shining or the wind's not blowing. And that will continue because we have that responsibility if we're putting so much renewables on the grid to also have that storage capability to back it up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much sir for your presentation, thank you, very helpful. Thank you Councilmember Montero for working on that and all the councilmembers that have been part of that effort. Bringing awareness to this, thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much Mayor and councilmembers.
Merry Christmas.
You too, thank you.
City Manager Norris, you have a homeless services update, go ahead, sir.
So do. Good evening Mayor, Mayor Protemp and councilmembers. At this time, I would like to introduce Dosse or Dusey Medina, homeless service coordinator for the city of Hawthorne and Johnson Sid, homeless service manager for St. Margaret Charities. May proceed with your presentation.
Thank you Vaughn.
Thank you.
Hi everyone, good evening councilmembers, city councilmembers, Mayor Alex Vargas, Mayor Protemp. It's a pleasure to see all of you. I haven't seen most of you in, in quite some time. Happy holidays to everyone. Thank you. So for some that might not know me, my name is Dulce Medina. As Vaughn mentioned, I am the Client Resource Coordinator for the city of Hawthorne. And I'm thrilled that I'm going to be able to provide you some updates regarding our homeless services department. Next slide. So I will be providing you a status report for the quarter, the third quarter report from July to September of this year. Some of our engagement out in the street with our partnerships. I will be providing you an update regarding our emergency housing voucher program and the housing authorities that our office is currently working with. I'll leave the good news towards the end and provide you a grant update with La Cotta and some of the funding sources that we're using for client aid. And just an update, a quick update regarding the homeless count that will be coming up January twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-two. Next slide. So from July to September of this year, our homeless program here in the city of Hawthorne had a hundred and thirty-five participants enrolled in our program with an actual file in our case management system. And thirty-four percent of those, a hundred and thirty-five participants identify themselves as females. Sixty-five percent of them as males and our average age of all our participants within our homeless program continues to be age fifty. We continue to provide services to mostly seniors between fifty and sixty-five, but our average age tends to be fifty, continues to be. Next slide. And during the quarter, forty-two percent of our participants identify themselves as Latinx, thirty-four percent as Black or African-American and twenty-four as other. I'm looking forward toward the, the next presentation, the end of the year report to provide a detail, a demographic of all the ethnicities and races for all our participants. Fifty percent of our participants are monolingual Spanish, so I'm happy that I'm able to correspond and conversate and provide adequate case management, both in English and Spanish to our clientele. Next slide, please. And for the quarter, July through September, between Jessie and I, when Jessie was still here, we submitted a hundred and ninety referrals, various referrals that had to do with mental health for some of our clientele, substance use, variety of social services, life skills, immigration. We partner up with St. Margaret Center where we refer most of our clientele. We partner up with St. Margaret Center where we refer m- most of our clients for immigration services and legal services and medical and health services. We provided uh three hundred and six hygiene kits and snack bags during our outreach and engagement and our one-on-one visits when clients come to see me at the office. And we provided two hundred and forty-three, actually, uh those numbers, the two hundred and forty-three, those were individual education classes. Uh one-on-one education that we provided for COVID and provided them a PPE mask and PPE uh supplies for them to to take. Throughout the quarter, at the end of September, we provided eight hundred and seventy-two diverse services that had a direct impact to our clientele. From uh life skills to mental health, social services, all of them combined, including the hygiene kits and snack bags. We provided eight hundred and seventy-two services uh that had a direct impact on our clientele. Next slide. And for our outreach and engagement, it did start to take a pause during uh the end of the quarter only because of the uh emergency housing vouchers that I'll go into detail. But in July through August, we only provided twenty-eight uh or encountered, I'm sorry, twenty-eight people experiencing homelessness. And that's because we were not going out as much during this quarter. We started submitting a lot of the assessments during the month of July. And a lot of the housing authorities and LASSA started responding to those matches towards the end of September. So we had to somewhat put a pause on our outreach and engagement. But we did have our last Rovin vaccine clinic with the Department of Health Services, Housing for Health, which uh I definitely want to emphasize the partnership we have with the Department of Health Services. They have continued to be a very strong partner and continue to be. We have been providing uh vaccine rolling clinics since April of twenty twenty-one to various encampments, various uh areas, churches, community agencies that partner up with our homeless services office and take out the mobile clinic that you see on that slide and actually go around and provide vaccines and uh outreach education to all uh people experiencing homelessness. So in September, we did take a pause, but I also want to take this opportunity to shout out the Hawthorne PD because when we started slowing down with that, with our outreach, Hawthorne PD has definitely stepped up. Whenever I reach out to them to find a client, they are on top of it. They know, I know where some of these clients are. They go out and look for them. They tell them, you need to go see your case manager at the office, you need paperwork. They have, the the partnership that we have developed uh with the Hawthorne PD is extremely important, is I value it tremendously. And uh it shows, even though we have slowed down our outreach, our collaboration via email, phone, um and then bringing clients over to the office has been extremely important and has helped our clients receive these housing vouchers. Next slide. So um it, as I mentioned before in the previous slide, in July, Jesse and I started submitting the assessment forms through our case management system. And we start with, all the assessment forms are submitted to LASSA. So currently, our office is working with three housing authorities. LAKDA, which is the first one, which is uh the L A County Development Authority, which serves approximately sixty-two uh areas in the Central Costa Valley and North County L A regions. Which means that if a client is matched to a LAKDA voucher, they have sixty-two areas to select from housing options, okay? The second housing authority that we're working with is HAKLA, which is the housing authority of the city of L A, which only serves within the city of L A. So clients who are matched to a HAKLA voucher can only access locations to live in within the city of L A. And then last but not least is our city of Hawthorne Department of Housing, which uh only serves within the city of Hawthorne. They could, if a client is matched to a Hawthorne City voucher, they can only find a location to live within the city of Hawthorne. And I definitely want to thank Kimberly Mack and her staff, her team. We have developed a very good partnership. Our communication is uh growing daily. Uh we are communicating on a daily base basis via email, phone. I've met uh most of her staff. They are being extremely helpful. We had our first voucher issuance uh this month, at the beginning of this month, where uh ten of our clients received a uh housing voucher. So we are gonna be busy with those clients, trying to find them a home. So uh that shows another great partnership that we have uh with uh the homeless program. Next slide.
My apologies for interrupting you. You have about two more minutes.
For uh for the emergency housing vouchers, during the quarter report, we submitted, as I mentioned, seventy-one housing assessments. Out of those seventy-one, thirty-nine were actually matched to a housing voucher, a LAKDA, HAKLA or Hawthorne E H V. At that time, none of them were matched to Hawthorne, but they were definitely matched to LAKDA, twenty of those. Twelve were matched to HAKLA applications. All those applications were submitted. And towards the end of September, we had three potential voucher issuance, meaning pending. They did not receive them until October, but they were pending uh review during uh the month of September. Next slide. And so this is the best part of the presentation. I wanted to leave the best for last. We did uh the grants and our funding. In August of uh this year, a proposal was submitted to obtain funding for the city's partnership with LAKDA, which is uh stands for I'm not LAKDA, I'm sorry, Lakata, Los Angeles Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse. And the partnership was with our homeless program. And basically, this partnership would provide outreach and behavioral health care services for people experiencing homelessness by say curing a bed with Lakata. So this particular grant is so important because over twenty agencies applied, and uh the city of Hawthorne was selected, and we were awarded three hundred and forty-eight thousand with the partnership with Lakata. And we will be focusing on referring our clientele for uh alcohol, drug, mental health, trauma disorders, and uh any type of symptom that is related to homelessness. And they will uh have a bed secured if they are referred by our homeless uh program here in the city of Hawthorne. So that's a tremendous success, and this will start in January of twenty twenty-two, and will go on till March of twenty twenty-three.
You're down to twenty seconds, Miss Medina.
Twen- uh okay. Uh and uh well, not, I want to introduce Jonathan Said. He is the homeless service manager at St. Margaret Center, and he is assisting with the client aid over at uh the South Bay Cities Council. Jonathan, are you on?
Yes, I hope everyone can hear me, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protemp and council members. Thank you uh quickly for inviting me to council as uh St. Margaret's new homeless services manager. I'm really honored to be a part of this tremendous effort here. Uh I had a lot more uh to uh say. But uh again, uh it's highly apparent this city has a vested interest in addressing homelessness through collaboration. And I'm really, really amazed about how robust the program is, um and how much Miss Dulce Medina is able to accomplish. Um so again, I wanted to applaud the tremendous leadership of council, city staff, and the special efforts of a city manager, Vaughn, Bernard Williams, Kimberly Mack. Um but uh as the slide suggests, effectively accessing the South Bay uh Council of Government's Client Aid Program, um which is a Measure H innovation funded uh to the um the the South Bay Cities Cog is a way we've been working collaboratively. Uh we have a really strong relationship uh with Ronson Chu over there, who's a really uh innovative but homeless services project manager. Uh and it's administered by Lori Jacobs. Uh and what we're able to do is really um with 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 mutual clients, specifically in uh Hawthorne, um we're able to provide a really flexible and rapid response. Um some of those examples uh include, um you know, uh motel stays and program transitions, uh transportation, um and other financial assistance. Uh that I'd be happy to answer further questions, and I want to honor the time, so thank you so much for having me.
Mayor Protemp, you have a question?
Uh yes, thank you Mayor. Um so thank you um, Miss Medina, um Mister Said. Um I um, I'm a board member of the COGS, so I'm familiar with the COGS programs. Um I, I wanted to ask you, the needs of the homeless as those who are drug abuse and um and alcohol abuse. Those needs are very different from the needs of other um other homeless persons. And I want to ask you, are your programs, I know you, the 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 program with the COGS has basically just started, but are your programs effectively addressing the differences in those needs? Because when you, when you, when you divide them out, the 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 state legislature had a, had a, had a tendency to address the needs of of the homeless by requiring the cities to build more housing. So there was a big push to uh to force the cities to build more housing. But the needs of the, those on drugs are very different from those who are experiencing homelessness because they were evicted from their homes or because they, they're very poor. So my question is, are you addressing the needs of the those who are drug addicted? And and those who have mental health problems effectively, and how are, and how do you feel that that is going as far as those numbers? I'd like to know what percentage of those are, of the homeless are drug addicted and on, and and on alcohol uh and and are um and have mental health issues as opposed to the others who who are just basically need housing?
Jonathan?
Yeah, Dulce, I'll, I'll be happy to start and then hand it over to you um specifically about the the Lakata pilot. Mayor Protemp, I think you uh you you hit the nail on the head, recognizing the current um swing to uh addressing housing needs of our neighbors experiencing homelessness. Uh and and at the same time, recognizing uh substance use uh issues uh and how that impacts uh folks' mental health and their ability to maintain housing or ability to effectively engage the homeless services system. Uh and so uh, you know, I I think, I think the Lakata pilot is an excellent example of swinging that back uh to the needs of the substance uh use population. But uh but considering.
Could, could you tell, could you say basically what percentage of those you encounter have, have mental health and drug, drug abuse issues as opposed to just needing a home?
Sure, uh I wish I had that, some precise numbers for you. Forgive me for not having those.
I will definitely run a report. Um sorry to interrupt Jonathan. I'll, I'll run a report and definitely get it to to Vaughn and uh so that we could, you could all have it. Uh but I just wanted to emphasize the partnership with hap- we we have with Lakata coming up. It's uh extremely important because it's definitely gonna be addressing those type of clients. Uh we're gonna be doing outreach and actually picking them up. If they're ready to go into a bed available for them, they will be going to uh recovery right away. Aside from Lakata, the partnerships we have with the Department of Health Services has definitely demonstrated to sh- uh have an impact. And uh if you can see throughout the city of Hawthorne, when you drive around, you're no longer gonna see large encampments. We be, the partnerships we have developed with Hawthorne PD and the Department of Health Services and the shelters, uh the winter shelters, we, I, I have been very busy along with Hawthorne PD and the Department of Health Services to actually uh refer the clients uh on the spot. And if we cannot take them ourselves, Hawthorne PD has actually been extremely helpful in taking them to a shelter, the Department of Health Services, and the LASSA Transportation. Uh so before uh like, which I'm extremely anxious to have law, uh the Lakata grant be implemented, Department of Health Services uh Housing for Health has definitely stepped up to the plate whenever we have to uh refer a client out to um have a fifty-one, fifty hole at at some times. Uh we're using the telehealth van, and we are also using the Core Center in Inglewood to refer clients. I apologize that I don't have those numbers for you this time, but I will be uh better prepared with those numbers uh at the next uh meeting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Montero?
Thank you Mister Mayor. Uh thank you uh Miss Medina and Jonathan uh for coming to bring us this uh report. Uh well done. Uh because when you're talking about that, you know, you guys have uh at that quarter from July to September, you had about a hundred and thirty-five participants. And I'm glad to hear that um our housing department, you know, you guys are gonna secure at least ten vouchers for the for some of the people that's gonna need this uh the Section Eight housing, so I hope those come true. The, the, some of the homeless that we've been seeing on the street, especially, you know, I have encountered it uh is on the same line as Miss Valentine was talking about. It is the mental health issue, right? Because even sometimes the police have hold them uh for few, for 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 day or something, uh and then they go back to the same, the same spot. It's, it's a case of a woman, for example, that has been uh basically camp on um on the Jim Thorpe Park, right? She have gone from the, from the castle, now she's at the picnic tables, you know, setting some fire at night on on the pits to get warm. But she's, she's not moving. Uh and and we know sometime we try to talk to her, but she, she doesn't respond well. Uh so that's probably will be one of the, your cost, one of the clients for the, for the Lakata project. I'm, 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 I have to say thank you for bringing that grant to Hawthorne. Uh because definitely we have some, a few homeless that have mental health issue. For example, there is one that right now is in camp right there in front of the Hawthorne Muslaj on Inglewood in a hundred and thirty-second. I tried to tell her to to move away from the door because she was right sleeping right at the door, even she called me names. Even so, then when I come back last night, she was still there. So but I left her there because, you know, it was gonna rain, so I didn't want her to be on the street. Uh but she also have mental health issues, okay? And and also I saw a little encampment on the Cordary Street. You know, the proper, the land that actually be- uh belongs to the city that we're gonna give to the Skid Row to build those uh veterans home. There is some encampment there. Uh uh a few of them, uh I just drove by this morning. Uh and there is some a blue tent uh in 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 that land that the Skid Row is gonna build those veterans home. Uh so just keep eye on those because I think those people ju- do do need housing, but also they need mental health. Uh because they not being nice to, when we try to approach them, okay? But keep doing great work. Uh like, you know, you know, uh I do attend sometime the uh South Bay Cog Homeless Task Force. So I'm glad to see that we have a team, you know, with you and St. Margaret, you know, and the police departments, and my head who goes after them. Uh because sometimes they're the one we call, right? When they're blocking business and stuff. So thank you for that partnership, and I I appreciate the the report. And uh yeah, definitely, I'm glad to see that the Department of Health, LASSA, and even the uh Health Van is helping you guys. So keep doing goo- good work. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Councilwoman Reyes English?
Thank you Mayor. I have a couple of questions, and I guess I'll give it to uh Miss Medina. So how many Hawthorne homeless have St. Margaret's been successfully in getting housed through either Section Eight or shelters?
So um, all our client, all the hundred and thirty-five clients that uh are enrolled under the Hawthorne Homeless Program are duly enrolled in St. Margaret. Um I don't want to say all of them, but some of them, uh especially the ones that have been linked to a voucher, which uh at the top of my head, and I have the list right in front of me, seventeen uh current Lakata, Lakata keep um LAKDA vouchers for L A County are duly enrolled in St. Margaret. So they are the ones that are gonna be taking the role basically and hopefully finding them um housing, okay? They have a voucher already, so we are active looking for a uh available units for them throughout L A County.
So we have a hundred and thirty-five homeless individuals in Hawthorne?
No, enrolled in our program. There's unfortunately more that have not been enrolled in our program. Uh but in our program as of, at the end of September, actually, we have a little bit more now because that report was only from July to September. We're approximately a hundred and eighty-two at the moment.
Okay, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm not asked, I, I'm, I'm confused. So I'm just talking about Hawthorne. So in your time of being out there doing the outreach, how many individuals do you have doing outreach from St. Margaret's?
We don't have that type of partnership with uh St. Margaret. The people that go out with me for the city of Hawthorne is Hawthorne PD, LASSA, and uh the Department of Health Services.
Oh, but we don't have a number for ho- how many's been placed, oh, how Hawthorne homeless individuals that have been placed?
We haven't, we place several of them in shelters on a daily basis, but un- but unfortunately, these are daily shelters.
Oh, they're not, they're not physical, um-
So you're going to have better numbers, uh, Councilmember English, uh, towards the end of the year because these clients are actually now, they actually now have a voucher in hand. So what we're currently doing, what I'm currently doing now in St. Margaret along with Jonathan and the staff over there are actually going out and looking at some of these apartment complexes that they will be living in. So we're going to have a much better report towards the end of the year because they actually have the vouchers in hand. We've never had that type of program before. What we dealt with in the past is referring them and getting them into daily shelters, transitional homes, uh, interim housing, which is temporary. And unfortunately, because we haven't had, uh, a stable mental health partnership the way we are going to have with Lakota, clients can easily walk away. Shelters are not the most popular with our clients because of, uh, the COVID pandemic si- situation. They have between thirty to a hundred, sometimes over a hundred clients in those particular spaces, and they don't like it. Uh, but we continue to refer them to interim housing, um, and bridge housing, which is temporary. But things are different now because of the voucher program. The Section Eight emergency voucher means that they actually have a voucher in their hands and they, it's not going to be a temporary thing. It's a permanent, stable home for them. And that is what we're concentrating in right now.
But we don't work with LASA on a regular basis, do we, here in Hawthorne?
No.
Yeah, because LASA, Los Angeles Home and Service Authority, as we know, is shared among all of, uh, LA County.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so we still need work with regards to, uh, personal touch to Hawthorne to assure that the residents that are here homeless in Hawthorne that need services, wraparound services, that need, uh, you know, hardcore services at this point, mental health, et cetera, behavioral health. The focus is for the council, we've done a big push to help our homeless. And I know that, um, your agency is providing, providing it what it can, but at the end of the day, we could always do more to address Hawthorne's needs. And I only say that because as you know, those grants are competitive and everybody's looking for those grants. You, my, by the way, congratulations on the three hundred thousand you received. But they're competitive, the grants are competitive and there's a lot of cities that are competing for the same grant. And, um, it's my hope that there's additional grants in this coming year, you know? However, uh, I, I, I'm really focused in quantifying how many individuals in Hawthorne. So as those numbers, uh, come up and, uh, we could vet out what those numbers are for Hawthorne, I'd like to see that in the next coming fiscal year, but thank you so much for your efforts.
Will do, will do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dulce and Jonathan, for being here and your presentation. Um, that, you're dead. When you said that the, the streets definitely look like, uh, people are being housed and they're, uh, moved into some type of shelter. It's very apparent. I've driven around and I, I, I just don't see the people out there like we used to, so there's a lot of successes, uh, uh, and that's, that's fact. I mean, you guys are doing your job and thank you very much. And I have some referrals to you, so maybe you can, uh-
Yes, I've been receiving them, please.
Yeah, just some referrals, people that are homeless out there, some, some of the people from, that have been out there in the streets. Okay, thank you. Thank you again. For our last presentation, City Manager Norris, please proceed. Republic Services SB thirteen eighty-three update, our compliance with that. Go ahead.
Absolutely. Uh, may I have Mr. Leon, Director of Public Works, please proceed with your presentation?
Um, yes. Good evening, uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor Potem and City Council. Um, uh, tonight we have Dawn Harris Benton, um, with Republic Services and she'll be, uh, giving us a PowerPoint information, uh, presentation on the SB thirteen eighty-three, um, to prepare the city, um, for twenty twenty-two for the new requirements. And with that, let me turn it over to Dawn.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council and staff. And, uh, as Alan mentioned, I'm Dawn Harris Benton from Republic Services and I'm here to cer- to share an update and let you all know what we've been doing. Uh, I know that, uh, earlier this year, you had a presentation from Cal Recycle and, uh, they gave you, uh, what was coming. And so, uh, wanted to share with you that we have been working very closely with your Public Works team, uh, to get things lined up for, uh, program implementation. And so I just wanted to, um, give you, uh, just a couple of reminders and also share with you how we are educating, uh, your residents and your businesses. Next slide, please. Thank you. And so just, uh, a real quick overview is, um, there, uh, SB thirteen eighty-three, things that you should know. Just overall, it's, uh, a new requirement that's part of, uh, mandatory recycling ordinance and it keeps, uh, food and green waste materials out of the landfill. And, uh, something interesting to note is that two-thirds of the trash we produce, um, we Californians produce is organic material that includes food and yard debris. And then when those things are not recycled appropriately, then they form methane gas and then that contributes to greenhouse gas issues. And so to avoid that, then the state came up with this mandatory recycling, uh, requirements starting, uh, January first. And so what will happen at that time is that Hawthorne residents and all residents in California will need to use, uh, some kind of, uh, food waste or, and organics recycling program. So what we have for the city of Hawthorne is that we've used the existing green waste cart that, that you put out every week. Um, and we'll use that, so you'll put, um, your normal green waste in there, uh, things that you cut from your yard, leaves and twigs and branches, but you also will include other things in there. Next slide, please. Uh, you will also include, uh, bones and banana peels and coffee grounds, uh, greasy paper bags and paper plates, napkins. All of those kinds of things will join your green waste in your green container. And, uh, we are working again with Public Works to get out the word. Next slide. And so now that you will be putting all of those things in your green waste container, your coffee grounds and your eggshells and your twigs, what goes into the blue cart? Same things, plastics, uh, cardboard, paper, uh, glass bottles. Those kind of things will continue to go into the blue cart. We want to be very clear that the blue cart is not for food waste or yard waste, e-waste, clothes, a- anything else like that. So, um, green container is covered with, uh, we've got the, uh, contents for that would be the organic materials and, and the blue container is for normal recycling. So next slide is what's left for the trash. There shouldn't be very much, right? So the last thing that, that, um, we'll just cover quickly is what will be left for the black cart. And those are those unmentionable things, diapers and pet waste, but other things like, um, snack wrappers and, uh, juice boxes, um, packing peanuts and styrofoam. Those things will continue to be placed in the black container. Next. And that, when thirteen eighty-three starts at the beginning of the year, that, um, residents will be impacted because they will need to put certain items into the green cart. But the businesses and the multifamily, uh, properties will be impacted as well. They have the same requirement that they, uh, recycle their organics and their food waste. And, um, just again, organics waste includes food scraps and green waste and prunings, um, some wood waste and food soiled paper. So those things are produced at businesses and multifamily properties, so they are required to have a recycling program as well. Um, we have been, uh, advertising in our newsletters and in other information that we can help businesses and multifamily properties to recycle. We can collect it for them. Um, we also can provide containers, um, and we can pr- uh, train your staff on how to use these so that if you happen to own a restaurant and, uh, you need back-of-the-house, uh, training so that your employees will, um, know what's recyclable and not, we literally will have a recycle coordinator to visit the site and train your, um, your back-of-the-house, your, your busboys and, and your rest of your employees on how to use the containers. And we also have, um, uh, opportunity to connect businesses and restaurants with food recovery programs. Next slide. Um, as far as how, um, additional ways that we are alerting the public about what needs to happen, uh, effective, uh, January first, um, we've been working hard again with your, uh, Public Works team and we communicate all of our information by things like quarterly newsletters. Um, we have work together with Public Works to, um, create news, uh, articles. Um, we have, uh, mailers and notices that go on, uh, the bills, um, and invoices. The, uh, drivers are able to and have been attaching tags to the trash carts and dumpsters. Um, we are working with your team as far as providing information for our social media. Um, your city also has a website and so do we that is dedicated to, uh, Hawthorne information. And then, uh, we also will, um, make use of your local cable station. You guys have a really good one, so we're able to, um, give them information for you to share with your community. And, uh, also wanted to note at this point, there is a, um, program, um, that had, it's called the Echo Hero Show and the Public Works team is working with the folks at this organization to create a, um, program. It's an assembly that promotes organics recycling and it's age appropriate and grade appropriate. So, um, that's in the works right now. So we believe that if you give the information to the kids, then they will take it home to their parents and get them, you know, prepared for it. And so that when information comes in the newsletter or if it's included in your, in with the, with the invoice or the bill, then they won't throw it away. Maybe they'll recognize it and they'll pay close attention to that. Um, next slide, please.
Sorry to interrupt Dawn, but you have two minutes.
Okay, thanks. I'll be on time. Um, also, uh, for education and outreach, another way that we are staying in touch is, um, to provide onsite training and presentations for property managers. Um, we also have, uh, recycle coordinators that visit properties. Um, they leave behind information, flyers, posters, reminders, and, uh, they are available, uh, at your request to do presentations for everyone that needs to know. Next slide. Also, um, many of your commercial customers are currently participating in recycling programs, so you're a little bit ahead of the game as far as that is concerned. Um, and for those that have opted not to participate just yet, we have, uh, recycle coordinators that, uh, man the phones and, uh, they call. They make outbound calls to the customers that have not subscribed to these services yet. Um, we also send letters and, um, we have our drivers, uh, to, uh, leave a note and recommendations on right sizing their service level so that they can, uh, participate appropriately. And also we, um, make calls and we offer the customers the opportunity to work directly with organizations that, um, they can donate their food or, or leftover foods, um, to local food banks. Last. Uh, just wanted to leave you with a quick reminder, um, effective January first, the new items that belong in your curbside container, the green one, our food scraps, food soiled paper, and the original green waste that you're familiar with placing there. Finally, last page, I have our, uh, contact information, uh, our customer service hotline. The rest of you have my direct line. Um, I have my email address here. So if you have any questions, uh, now or later, please feel free to give me a call.
Mayor Potem, you have a question? You're muted. Can you unmute yourself?
Yes, I have a comment and a question. So Dawn, thank you for that excellent presentation. It was very clear and very well and, and, uh, very thorough. Um, my question is, what kind of enforcement mechanism is being set up to make sure these, uh, th- there is, there is effective compliance with the requirements? And, and who is going to do the enforcing?
Well, there's two things to that. One of them is that you've already, um, you, you've already got your ordinances in place so that, um, you know, uh, residents or, I don't want to call them offenders, but folks that need to know, uh, that are not participating, you've got your ordinances in place so that they can be notified. Um, and so we are working with your Public Works staff. We've got, um, a team that is out there. Uh, we can do the warning when, you know, when we're out and about. Would, uh, re- rely on your Public Works team to actually do the enforcement.
Okay, and then you also mentioned, um, uh, there was, there are people who have to subscribe to the services. What did you mean by that? Who has to subscribe?
Uh, the re- um, customers need to, businesses and multifamily properties. They need to sign up for the service. They need to sign up. In the past, when we've had our guy out, our team out and trying to promote the recycling programs, some customers just don't really want to be bothered. So now that the law is in effect on January first, they might be more encouraged to participate and sign up.
So if you, if you, when you say you have to sign up, how do you sign up?
Well, we go out and we do a site assessment. We send our, our team out and we'll do a site assessment and then we will offer you the proper size, uh, container based on what your debris is. It could be, um, a, a small cart, you know, the kind that you use to push out at the curb, or it could be a dumpster. So depending on what kind of, uh, business you have and how much organic material you have, we'll make the, uh, determination what size that is needed there. And then once the customer agrees to that, then we'll set up and have him, uh, scheduled and delivered and his, his, uh, container and his contents added to the driver's route for weekly service.
So you're not talking about residents having to sign up. You're talking about businesses, is that right?
Businesses, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Mm-hmm. Oh, got a lot of questions. Okay.
Councilmember Montero and then, uh, Councilmember Reyes English.
When English had her hand up before me.
To her? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, hi Dawn, hi Tanya. Thank you so much, first of all, for, uh, the great presentation, but moreover, just for your collaboration partnership throughout the years, uh, for all that you do here in our community, from our community cleanups to Operation Gobble, to just a number of things that you've been hands-on with and we can't say enough. Uh, we appreciate the leadership that you're taking to assist us in getting this program often going. We know that this is, uh, the thing that everybody's going to do moving forward for many cities and, uh, statewide. Um, the other thing I wanted to, to, to share was, I know you mentioned that you're doing a lot of, uh, Channel Thirty-five, partnering with our, with our TV and, uh, information to the community. Is, and, and you said you're going out and visiting locations too. Um, is this going to be something that you're going to be doing ongoing?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And i- is, is, i- i- is there going to be a great change or a, a big change with regards to billing? Is there going to be a, a significant, I should say, change or?
There, there will be a change and we are actively negotiating that with the Public Works team. You guys saw the article on Friday from the LA Times and it gave all the information. It's the, the, uh, changes could be as, as low as five percent and as much as twenty percent. And so, um, we are back sharpening our pencils to try to make it as, as easy as possible.
Yeah.
We'll say that way. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just want to be able to, um, assure the community, the businesses, um, that we're just continually putting out the education- just continually putting out the educational component behind this, the general information, and assuring the community and, and those that are gonna have some sense of, you know, change, how to contact us, the numbers, you know, to how to reach us, talk to them one-on-one, giving them, you know, personal touch, so that we could not be inundated, if you will, with those that might say that they weren't to notify or have, you know, more information. So I just want to make sure that we're doing that moving forward and that we're ahead of the game. And again, I can't say enough for your collaboration and assistance in making sure that we're doing this correctly and everyone is informed, well-informed.
Thank you. We will continue.
Councilmember Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dawn, for your presentation. I acquit the sentiment of Ms. English about your partnership and all the events that we do in the city, so thank you very much. You, you almost have answered my question because it was about the multifamilies, because like, you know, some of them only have one trash bin, right? Like, one color. And so I, for example, if I have one, I have to call you to say that I want to, for you to bring me a recycle one for the food and for the leaves, et cetera, et cetera, right?
Well, you can do that now. You can do that now, and if you haven't already, somebody will be reaching out to you. We actually have a customer list and so we've got folks and we're trying to attack the list like this. So if, for the folks that haven't been contacted yet, there should have been like mailers that you would have received and at the very least, a quarterly, a quarterly newsletter kind of thing.
So, so, so what's gonna happen is, for example, so, because sometimes, you know, we pay the containers, right? The trash bins. So, so, so when, if we add two small ones for the recycles and, and for the food waste, so, so our bills is going to increase because you're gonna charge us for those bins, correct?
Well, yes, and it's not actually the container we're charging you for, it's the service that we provide because all of those things have to get to a new location now, those items.
Okay, all right. Maybe I'll talk to you later this week. Thank you.
Please do.
All right.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dawn, for that information. And yeah, that's a little bit confusing. Hopefully, more and more people will get used to knowing what they don't put in the brown or the black bin and end up putting it in the green bin. So, education, just keep reminding people so it can become much more clear.
Absolutely, absolutely will.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Hope you're well.
Merry Christmas.
And to you all as well, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas, merry Christmas.
Bye, Tanya.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for communications. I'm gonna step away, Mayor Protem, just run through the communications, please.
Oh.
No, just, yeah, go ahead, Mr. City Clerk, go ahead.
Perfect. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, our remarks shall be addressed to the City Council as a body, not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, shall have discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation. Miss, Madam Mayor Protem, we received two emails regarding public comments for tonight's agenda in support of the Clean Power Alliance, and we have received seven speakers tonight for our communications.
All right, would you please go ahead and read them?
Yes. Oh, we're, we, we have the emails that we forwarded to you and we have the first speaker at this point.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead, Diana.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Our first speaker is Marilyn, I'm sorry, Meredith. Meredith, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Meredith Thomas. I'm a local science teacher and I'm calling in urge to the City Council to make 100% green power the default option for Hawthorne on the Clean Power Alliance. As someone who has opted into the 100% green power, the change in my, in my cost, my monthly electricity bill have been negligible and making this change, I believe, is a starting point to addressing larger environmental issues that are impacting our community and shows that our city is willing to take a stand against inevitable changes to our climate and our community by committing to cleaner energy sources. I strongly encourage the City Council to change the current default from green power to 100% green power. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Galda Ortiz. Ms. Ortiz, you have three minutes.
Yes, go ahead and run through those, Mr. City Clerk.
My name is Galda Ortiz, I'm a resident of Hawthorne, and I am calling because of the concern that many of the residents are having in this town with the increase of rent. There are many here who feel that the council members and the mayor should sit down and, 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 you know, and start a movement in regard to making rent control something plausible for us. I have been unemployed for two years, not because I don't want to be unemployed, it's that I don't find a job that can pay the rent increases that is occurring in my building complex. I've just been increased $100. Many of my, the friends that I have living in the building complex have also been raised $100 and it's been very, it's been very difficult because of the, some of them have, are not working, they're unemployed, their hours have been reduced, and I implored the board and, and the mayor to really sit down and work with us residents in finding a solution and talking to landlords and implementing rent control in the city of Hawthorne. That is my biggest concern that I have. And I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice this because there are many of us who are concerned about the housing issue here in the city of Hawthorne. Thank you so much for your time and I do appreciate expressing this and I do hope that someone from the council reaches out to me so they could come here to Regal Matters and talk to the tenants about the situation.
Okay, Mr. City Clerk, before you go to the next one, thank you ma'am for bringing this to our attention. The state, the state of California already has a rent control envelope that they cover all of the state's individuals and there's limitations as to how much landlords can increase the rent by. Okay? That's outside of our purview. The LA County does have some, a specific rent control that applies to LA County residents that doesn't include the incorporated cities. So there is something that's being done and is being done by the state and we're deferring to what they're doing. They're the enforcers up there. Anything beyond that, that's a, something between the landlord and the tenant, needs to be taken up in the court of law. So we have, we have implored the state representatives and they have followed through with these rent control measures, so thank you.
Thank you for your phone call, Ms. Ortiz.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Mr. City Clerk, please give her the details on that, if we have a summary on that, it'd be, just so she knows what we were talking about.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Diana has the next speaker.
Okay, our next speaker is Ruben Sanchez. Go ahead, Mr. Sanchez.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ruben Sanchez, President of North Hawthorne Community Association. I wanted to call, the reason I call is because I wanted to remind everyone that, you know, there's a lot of people right now, especially during the holidays, they're having some real bad hardship. A lot of people are losing their jobs, a lot of their salaries are being cut. And the reason I called was because I caught my attention with item 19 in regards of the council for a request on a higher salary. First of all, that's some real elitist behavior there and that should be changed, thrown out right away. There's no reason for high salaries, especially outside of the hardship that everybody's going through. Especially you guys are making a lot of poor choices right now. For example, you guys brought in the telehealth ban program. Now, nice, nice and all, but the PR, the, the PR for that, for that ban was a gangster rapper. Listen to this, it's a gangster rapper who glorifies gang activity in his music. Are you guys forgetting that there was the killing on Shattered Avenue, who shot a young, a young man died on Shattered Avenue because of gang activity? Another, I believe he was, he was also a rapper himself. You know, just think about that. These are the choices you guys are making. These are what you're bringing into the city. This young man died on Shattered Avenue, he was killed and shot. And no, Mr. Bradford, he wasn't killed by the KKK, he wasn't shot by a police officer, he was shot by a gang member. The real issue that we're having, not only in Hawthorne, but throughout the South Bay. And, and what's really sad that none of you council members stood up and reminded the senator that there's a lot of gang activity going on, a lot of crime is going on. Right now, there was a shoot, what was it, not that long ago, there was a shooting in Eucalyptus Park? Okay? There's a shooting over here in Lenox, Gardena, Torrance, but because they weren't, they weren't shot by police officers or KKK members, all of a sudden, that doesn't matter, right? To nobody. Nobody stood up for the community, nobody stood up for the minority. All of you just sat down and listened and bowed, bowed down. You guys need to stand up for the community. People are dying in our streets because of gang activity and for people for glorifying gang activity in their music. And I bet you, if I ask anyone out there, what's the name of the young man that was killed in Shattered Avenue? None of you know. His name was Zarell Rivera, a 21-year-old young boy. Okay? Shame on you guys, that you have, you guys have not even brought up his name. But yet, why? Because he wasn't, he wasn't shot by a police officer or a KKK member. Senator Bradford said. Okay? Well, I'll move on a little bit because I want to congratulate Robert Kim, City Attorney. Thanks a lot for what you're doing with the, with the Hawthorne Mall and also Mont Norris, City Manager. You guys have been doing much more in these past few months than the City Council has been doing for years. You guys better start doing, till you get your priorities straight for next year and don't expect no higher salary, all right? Focus on what we need to focus on, on the crime that's going on in our city. Pretending it doesn't, it doesn't exist. God bless and have, have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams, you have three minutes.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Lefell Williams here. A lot to say in a short time to say. However, 2021 was a recovery year for us and it saddens a lot of the community of Hawthorne that our city wasn't really recovered and the doors of a lot of businesses are still closed at this point in time because our neighboring city, the stadium is bringing a lot of revenue into the surrounding cities around us, even Lenox as well. And it was asked earlier in the year if we could even get media signs up on Imperial and Hawthorne Boulevard, El Sabando and Hawthorne Boulevard. These media signs are eye candy for people that travel through our city. And even we were asking if our city could send a letter to Dicky's Barbecue. It, it really saddens a lot of the community here, the good neighbors, that that franchise has not been open, still closed until this day. That, that raises a lot of eyebrows. However, on a good note, the city is very happy and sent a lot of blessings and remorse to our honorable City Clerk, Mr. Montero, all the city comical people that have given fresh vegetables and food and gift cards to the homeless. It is really, really appreciated and as you drive around our city, we see that a lot of the homeless have really gotten housing and we do thank our, our honorable Director of the Housing Department, Ms. Mack has put out the flyers so that everyone could read them, put them out in Spanish and put them out in English and had volunteers to pass those flyers around. We could tell that those flyers was very, very useful, very useful. And it's a good thing we have a wonderful council and we had one of our council members to even ask, can the airport pull in some revenue and let private planes land there? We still have this stadium and just because the football season is never coming to an end, there is a lot of concert, BTS was there, had three-day sellout for that huge concert. We need to pull in some of that revenue that's coming to that neighboring city. And however, it is a jolly, jolly season. I had one person just called me and say, our honorable mayor is looking so warm and cozy in that sweater. So I would like to close this saying, 'Tis the season, every jolly. Thank you, council members in the city of Hawthorne. Happy holidays. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Have a good night.
It is warm. Keep it my neck warm here, right?
Diana has our next speaker.
Hi, our next speaker is Michelle. Go ahead, Michelle.
Good evening, Council. My name is Michelle Allison. I'm from Ojai, which is also part of Clean Power Alliance, and I serve as an alternate director on the board. My town is among the 18-member agencies in CPA that have adopted a 100% green default and it's exciting that more and more cities are making this switch. This really is an opportune time. The 100% renewable default has proven to be one of the most significant, cost-effective and immediate ways for our communities to act on climate and virtually eliminate electricity-related emissions. So imagine, if you made this switch, your 85,000 residents could be powering their homes and businesses with non-doubling clean energy as a result of this one decision. Truly remarkable. It would take much more time, expense and effort to achieve this level of progress otherwise. Overall, you know, today, 27 municipalities in California with 2.5 million people have adopted a 100% green default, including just last week, LA County, they voted to do it. So you'd be in good company and part of the growing movement leading the nation in the transition to clean energy. Climate scientists are warning us that governments at all levels everywhere must take immediate and unprecedented action to curb emissions. The good news is that we have tools like the green default to help us get where we need to go. You as leaders of your community are in a unique position to respond. Defaults have immense power to affect outcomes. Studies show that people tend to stick with whatever the default is and that's been the case with cities of CPA. If the default is set at 100%, most remain there and likewise, if it's set at the lower tier, most remain there. There's very little movement up or down. So if we want clean energy, then our defaults can be used to support that. As, you know, with regard to cost considerations, as Ted had outlined earlier, there's only about a 3% bill difference to go from lean to 100% green, so that's just a few dollars more per month for most customers. And with CPA rates projected to be less than FDU's next year, customers will benefit from rate sizings across the board. While the lower two options currently cost a little less, it's important to take into account the costs associated with more polluting emissions and unmitigated climate change. For example, the billions of dollars in wildfire damages. What's reassuring is that no one's forcing anything and that the default is simply a suggestion, you know, easy, up, up or down or out, and low-income customers receive the benefit of no extra cost. CPA is, I know, work very closely with some of these cities that have made the switch recently on communicating the change and making sure customers are well-informed and aware of their options. So to wrap up, this is likely one of the biggest impact decisions you can make for your community and it'd be fantastic to have your city help lead the way to a cleaner, healthier and more sustainable tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nabila. Ms. Nabila, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Nabila Hussein. I am a Hawthorne resident and a student at Hawthorne Math and Science Academy and I support the discussion item calling for the city of Hawthorne to use 100% green energy.
Is that the end of your comments?
Yes.
All right, thank you for your comment. You have a good night. That is the end of public comments, Mr. Mayor? We could hold on for our 30-second delay?
I think that's about it, so.
Yes, that is 30 seconds.
Right, thank you.
That is the end of public comments.
Thank you, sir. All right, so, having no more speakers, I declare, I declare oral communications close order. Thank you to all the, all the speakers for their concerns, feedback and opinions. So, Mr. Clerk, can we have your consent calendar?
Yes, you may, Mr. Mayor. There are no bids tonight. I have four items on the consent calendar. There are items nine, 10, 13 and 14 for your consideration and approval. Item nine, approval waiver of full readings, a resolution, resolutions and/or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item 10, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item 13, resolution number 8322, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, removing resolution number 5270 and replacing it with resolution number 8322, an updated procedure for destruction of police department background files and records retained pursuant to Penal Code Section 832.5. Item 14, resolution number 8324, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, re-ratifying the appropriate re-ratifying the proclamation of state of emergency by Governor Newsom on March fourth, twenty-twenty and re-authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the City Council, commissions and committees of the City of Hawthorne for the thirty-day period beginning December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one through January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two pursuant to the Ralph and Brown Act and Assembly Bill number three-six-one for adoption.
I move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson? Oh, you're on mute.
I would say aye, but I would like to ask question for clarification for number seventeen, if possible.
Yeah, go ahead, uh, let's go through, continue roll call voting.
Council, Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Uh, go ahead with your point of information.
Uh, well, I just wanted to confirm with, with staff, um, what's essentially what is item seventeen do and, and will this impact any proposed projects?
Go ahead, staff.
There's had some questions from the community.
Yes, we're gonna have our interim, uh, plan director, Greg McLean, address that question.
Yes, thank you, um, item number seventeen is ordinance that, uh, addresses the, um, development standards for mixed-use overlay zone and for the, um, mixed-commercial classification, which is essentially where the mall is. And, um, what this does is, um, set a clear pre- a preference among mixed-use projects for a vertical mixed-use, but it does not, um, exclude horizontal mixed-use. So the difference being that vertical is where the commercial component is on the ground floor and residential is above. And horizontal would be where, um, commercial would be on, say, the front of the property and residential could be on the back of the property. Um, this just makes it very clear that the preference of the, of the city is that we, uh, want to see more vertical um, mixed-use. It also, um, it also, um, reduces the, the, um, burden on the, uh, amount of commercial that is required. And both of, both of these changes are the result of, uh, requests that came out of a council meeting in, um, in May of this year. And, and the, both of them are the result of projects that were built on Rosecrans Avenue, um, that were seen as a little bit flawed and could be improved. And so, both of these changes are in response to that to make, uh, future mixed-use projects more viable and, um, more, more appropriately balanced and appropriate for their locations.
Will this, uh, impact or stop any proposed projects?
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have any impact on any current or proposed projects.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think it was me, um, good evening, uh, Mr. Greg McLean. Um, I brought, I wanna bring something up because during the housing element presentation, uh, it, it was kind of like a mention about that the twenty-four unit per acre.
Uh huh.
It's not helping us with those arena numbers. And we thought about could potentially, we would go from the twenty-four to the thirty.
Right.
Uh, acres. If, if this is the time since we are changing this thing, is, is this the time to make, to make that, uh, change?
Well, we are making changes in other places in response to that need. Um, this code amendment came out of a request from a council meeting and so it's only addressing the issues that were brought up in that council meeting. And so I didn't add anything new to it, I only stuck to the direction that was given to my predecessor. Um, but we could certainly come back and revisit the density. Um, this, um, amendment does not even deal with the residential portion of mixed-use, it strictly deals with the commercial portions and the relationship of commercials to residential. Uh, we have, we had a meeting incidentally with, um, with the, the State Department of Housing and Community Development today regarding our housing element and there were a number of corrections that we're going to receive from them. Um, I would suggest that we, uh, wait for the letter to come from them, which will probably arrive Friday and give us a chance to digest that and see if it's necessary at this time to look at additional density before we start looking for places to put additional density. We may not need to do any more than we've already done at this time. And then if we need to do more, hopefully we won't, but if we do, then we can come back and visit that. Um, but based on what I heard today, I don't think we need to do more than what we've already proposed.
Alright, fantastic, alright, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for that, thank you for that feedback and that sounds good approach, you know, instead of jumping the gun.
Can I just, uh, real quick, Mayor?
Yes, yes, yes.
Greg, knowing that and that, uh, the state's gonna provide us some, uh, uh, notice on, uh, I don't know, maybe some things that we're doing wrong. Can you make sure the council gets that letter too?
Oh, absolutely, um, it's going to be a highly technical letter. It is, it's not necessarily stuff that we're doing wrong, it's stuff that was not adequately, um, analyzed and things of that nature. Um, yeah, I will provide a copy of the letter, though.
Thank you.
Right, is that it? Okay, let's go move ahead to, um, ordinances, uh, Mr. Clerk, item seventeen, can you read that?
Yes, ordinance number two-two-two-five, second reading, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending chapter seventeen point two-nine, mixed commercials classification, chapter seventeen point seven, mixed-use overlay zone and a pending B, design guide for highest-density residential use and mixed-use developmental, development. Of title seventeen, zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code with respect to the development standards for mixed-use projects in the City of Hawthorne for adoption.
I make a motion?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Okay, uh, before we move forward, um, I know we have a series of items, it's starting to get, uh, anticipated that it might be late. So let's just go ahead and just keep our, you know, discussion as concise as we can. But of course, make sure you guys mentioned everything you wanna talk about, of course. Item eighteen, please.
Ordinance number two-two-seven, second reading, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, repealing chapter eight-point-four-eight, regulation of smoking in city-owned facilities and re-adopting a new chapter eight-point-four-eight, second-hand smoke and smoking prohibition for adoption.
I move? Motion, okay, second by, uh, Councilwoman with English? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Okay, congratulations, City Council, this is very important, keep our community safe, something, uh, maybe we could have done even earlier, but we're doing it now. Uh, item number nineteen, please.
Ordinance number two-two-eight, first reading, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, setting the compensation of the mayor and city council member, members commencing January first, twenty-twenty-three for introduction.
You'll introduce? Okay, it's been introduced. Discussion can be had later, thank you. Uh, general matters, we have general matters, Mr. Clerk, please read item twenty-one for the record.
American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA update. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council discuss the categories and suggested ideas for assisting Hawthorne businesses with ARPA funding. After receiving city council direction, city staff confirm up the funding request and options presented. Additionally, H D L will continue to monitor the possible legislative changes being pursued for ARPA and the impact it may have on funding a broader range of infrastructure projects for Hawthorne.
I move to accept the, uh, report.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Uh, I would, I, but I have a quick, uh, comment and question.
Okay, okay. Okay, go ahead and continue with the roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and council members voting yes.
Councilmember Montero and then Mayor Proton, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, actually, uh, thank you for the, for the summary of the business survey and stuff like that, that was, uh, quite, uh, interesting, um. I wanted to see if we can put more money in the storefront reopen and board up removable. It's only fifty thousand, that doesn't go far. Uh, I wanna see maybe we can up maybe to a hundred or a hundred-and-fifty thousand, is there money there?
Um, there is, and I just wanted to, uh, let, you know, we, we had planned a presentation, but if you'd like, we can just answer questions, if that's okay with everyone.
Oh, okay. Did you hear that, Mr. Mayor? There was a presentation.
Okay, well.
We just wanted to review the survey results, um, just kind of update you on, uh, prior approvals by council, but, um, it's, it's all on the presentation that you received, um, in your packets. Um, so if you'd prefer to just have us answer questions, we can do that.
But we'd like to, I'll defer to my council colleagues, are you guys ready to answer any questions, there is a reporting book?
I'd like to hear what, what, what the survey, what they found in the survey.
Okay, and, um, I will introduce, um, Ken Duran and Barry Foster then, um, and they will, uh, review the survey results.
Thank you, of course, of course. Thank you, Mayor and Council, um, Barry Foster, Principal and Managing Director with the Asia Companies, I've had the pleasure of addressing you, um, I think two or three times now to talk about ARPA and, um, s- some of the early kind of preliminary funding um, recommendations that the councils approved, so this, this is kind of the next step in, in terms of ARPA. And so I'm, I'm pleased to, um, introduce Ken Duran, Ken came to work for our company in September. Um, Ken, uh, worked, uh, thirty-four years for the city of San Dimas in a, in various roles. Longtime Assistant City Manager and then retired as the City Manager, so we, uh, we were happy to, to grab him when he retired and he's now doing work for us with a number of clients on ARPA. So Ken is gonna kind of quickly go through and, and talk about, um, the, the, the business need survey that we did, uh, worked with your staff on, on that with Hawthorne and that really was, was meant to go out and, um, and survey the business community, to talk about how they've been impacted by the pandemic and COVID-nineteen and then some, some ideas and what we use the funding for. So, uh, the, the survey kind of really helped guide, um, in terms of putting together some, some funding recommendations to help with the business community. So, Ken, if you can kind of quickly go through and, and hit some of the high points in terms of the business survey and, um, and then the recommendations that we have for, um, helping the business community in Hawthorne.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mayor Proton and Council, um, let me just give you some of the highlights of the survey, it's in your staff report. But there were, uh, nineteen-hundred-and-sixteen surveys that were sent out by your staff in that there was a, a street team that was hired to go out and make individual contacts with the individual businesses to try and facilitate, um, maximum participation in the survey. There were two-hundred-and-four valid surveys that were submitted and some of the highlights include that, um, seventy percent of the businesses that responded, uh, were either self-employed or small businesses that had, uh, one to four employees. There was a, um, the mix of businesses were clearly small businesses, uh, a lot of, uh, personal care, professional businesses, independent restaurants, um, and personal auto-related businesses made up the majority of the categories of the, uh, respondents. Ninety percent of the respondents indicated that they were impacted by, uh, COVID-nineteen. And so those impacted, impacts, um, included the loss of revenue, reduced customer demand, temporary closures and layoff of their employees. Uh, there were only forty-one percent of the businesses that received COVID-nineteen, uh, funding from outside sources via either state or federal government, which is, I think, a telling, um, uh, fact that the majority of your businesses did not receive any outside funding for relief during the pandemic. Uh, of those that received, uh, assistance, um, most of those received, um, below, uh, fifty thousand dollars in, or, or fifty thousand dollars in support. Um, some of the greatest challenges that, uh, businesses felt that they are facing in recovery included re-establishing their customers, uh, paying rent and utilities, uh, c- continuing with cash flow and rehiring and training employees, obtaining inventory and marketing their businesses. When asked what type of assistance they would, um, would like to receive, most of them, uh, indicated assistance with grants and loan applications, online business support, rental assistance grants, financial training and employee training and rehiring assistance. So our analysis of those responses, uh, was that the majority of the businesses, um, that responded in, in the community are small businesses, pri- primarily professional care and independently owned businesses. And many of them did not receive any COVID relief and many would like to seek individual, individualized business assistance either in the form of, um, financial assistance or business assistance by an outside consultant in the form of, um, assistance with online applications for, um, relief, funding, employee training or assistance with marketing. That, those, um, results led us to the recommendations for the business assistance categories that are being recommended uh, for you this evening. If you have any questions regarding the survey results, be happy to answer those.
Uh, who, who would like to go first?
I would.
Mayor Proton, um, then, uh, Councilwoman English and then Councilmember Montero, go ahead.
Alright, so, um, I have several questions, but I, so I want to ask you first, uh, who received the surveys? Where, who, 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 to whom were the surveys sent?
Those came into, um, City Manager's office and, um, to a, an, an email address that was set up on, on our City of Hawthorne website.
Okay, so it, so the, the website, okay, so on the website you asked for, you asked people, you solicited inquiries and you received the, and, and you responded to those who, who, who signed up on the website, is that right?
Well, there, there was a survey there and then they submitted the survey.
Okay.
I think her question, uh, Felice, is how did we, uh, select who received the surveys? Is that your question, or?
Yes.
Oh, well, I can answer that, so, we use business license and we use, um, our mailer list and we really saturated Hawthorne Boulevard. We felt that was the, the highest area that where we wanted to focus, uh, a lot of our resources to. We did share with other businesses, but we really focused on our, on our stripped area between, uh, Imperial, Rosecrans, excuse me, Rosecrans on Hawthorne Boulevard.
And so when you sent these out, how did you send them, you, uh, when you, when you contacted them, how were they contacted?
Uh, they were mailed out and then as, uh, Ken mentioned, uh, Mr. Duran, that we used a street team to, uh, circle back and reassess contact with those businesses that, uh, the mailers were mailed out to.
Okay, so the reason for my question is this, because of my work with the Hawthorne Business Expo, there are several things that I have observed. One of the, one of the things I've observed is that many of our businesses do not have email. And because they do not have email, that would be the reason why they were, many of them would have been unaware of, of the, um, opportunities for, for funding that were available through the federal and the state sources. So, the, whatever we do for them, um, I believe we should do something that includes email support, I don't know how that would be done, I think we would probably have to discuss that. But, um, when we have contact, when, when our business expo committee has contacted businesses, many of them have phone, phone numbers, but no email addresses, that is a real serious problem, that's the first thing. The second thing is that so, many of the businesses indicated to me, when I spoke with them, that they are having trouble finding people to work, some, you know, uh, they're, they're having trouble hiring people, especially the restaurants. They're, they're not, they're not able to, um, some of the workers did not return to work because of COVID and they can't find workers to replace them, so that's a problem also. So I think we need to find a way to provide them with support in that regard. I know the South Bay Workforce Investment Board does, uh, recruiting, uh, assists businesses with recruiting and that's something perhaps we can go through the web, uh, to, to, to obtain help for them. But those are the things that I've, I have observed about the businesses. Um, but the email, the email issue is critical to me. I am, I, I cannot see how businesses can be successful without having email. So, that, 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 that's what I would like to address.
Um, thank you, and I can see that happening because a lot of these businesses have been long-term businesses that have been here and have like, have an initial application that probably predates a lot of people having like, uh, emails. Um, especially along Hawthorne Boulevard, but you're right, perhaps this could be a project that the city clerks, uh, interns could, uh, go out and accomplish, or we can send a task force, if people would like to volunteer for, I don't know, just, just somebody to get the, just walk along the boulevard, get those emails, so. The mom and pops are the ones that we have a hard time collecting their emails, okay, but go ahead. What did we say, who's gonna go next? English or Montero?
Go ahead, uh, Councilmember Montero, go ahead, I like him.
Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Montero, you're saying a lot of stuff, but we can't hear you.
Sorry, I said, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilwoman English, let me go, but, but, um, thank you for, uh, for the, for the survey and. And um actually, you know, I did receive one of those surveys uh via, via mail. I, cause I have several nonprofits and I did receive uh one of the survey and I, I did apply, I did reply and I went on and submitted on, on that website or an email that was provided. So I did, did fill it out. But um, what Ms. Valentine is saying is, see, there is some uh resources out there that a lot of the uh state and federal grant that was given to the small business was very well advertised on television, uh newsletters. It was very well advertised because even, you know, uh for non, nonprofit, I did try to apply for, you know, for several, several of them uh on, on, online. It, it, it was a very tedious process and they ask you a lot of question and then they ask you for a lot of documents. So it can frustrate you. So then I can understand how only forty-one percent said that they got assistance from the federal or the state because the process was not friendly. So I can say that. Uh, but I do agree that maybe our business in Hawthorne, we need to modernize them to the twenty-first century economics. Uh, and I think also Al Camino Business uh has some programs that help small business create website and email. So maybe it's something that we need to reach out to them and partner with Al Camino and with the South Bay Whip to get this business in, up to the technology of twenty-first century. Uh, but, but I do, um, I do agree with your suggestions about, about giving some help to the community. And I saw that you guys put some money into some type of um media outreach, marketing, right? Uh, strategies out there, but, but um marketing assistance program, twenty-five thousand dollar. I found that this is, is, is not enough money to tell you the truth because if you wanna help those, that, those businesses, like if we, if we send at least a nineteen hundred survey, then two hundred and four reply, but I still think that probably there is a lot of um business out there that um just felt not, not the answer to the, the survey. But we can help them definitely with more uh marketing to bring back the customers or to recruit new employees. So I would suggest to put more money on marketing assistance program and also the storefront reopen and board up removal because I don't think fifty thousand dollars is enough. So that's my recommendation on that, to put more money into those categories uh to help uh because that's the way the business is going to be fruitful in, in the near future.
Okay, and with um Councilmember um Montero, what, what amount would you um suggest?
Well, for the mon, because you know, marketing tends to be expensive. So our marketing and outreach tend to be expensive. So I, I would suggest was to put up to a hundred thousand dollars in there and the storefront to also to an, uh instead of fifty to go to one hundred thousand at least.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Okay.
Just double it for right now, right?
Yes, double. But the marketing, I think to put more money in there because that's the key pieces to make this business successful is to make sure that they have a, a, a marketing strategy, you know, like technology, website, email, social medias. And then also for them to have like some type of a business plan, how to recruit new staff that especially, you know, we know that a lot of restaurant people, nobody wants to be uh waiters anymore, right? Because and, and, and they're going to, they're finding some other job somewhere. So, so that's the kind of things that we need to try to get these businesses something to do, how to recruit and how to market their business and their products.
Okay. Councilmember, Councilmember English?
Uh, thank you. Let me first of all uh thank uh City Manager, Mr. Foster, Mr. Duran and Ms. Lopez for your efforts. Uh nineteen hundred applicants, I think uh we need to try again. I think for the most part, we need to see how much uh more we could do to assist our businesses. Moreover, I believe that some of the businesses have some challenges. They have some language challenges, they have some tools that they're not familiar with using, such as the internet, such as having a website, such as having a, a business that's a little bit more proactive and more professional in, in style that provides all of the uh internet access, uh email access, applications with grants and whatnot through uh computer use. I truly believe that some of the businesses are maybe hesitant also. Uh, I think that some of the businesses uh are, are businesses that are um not feeling um confident in, in, in information they may be providing. Uh, however, I'd like to see uh again another round of uh outreach to go back out to see how we could capture more. Uh, I think forty-one percent of the businesses that didn't receive any relief from COVID uh could be for a number of reasons. Um, I don't necessarily believe, uh however, you know, I'm not disagreeing. However, it's my opinion too that a hundred thousand to assist businesses that are brick and mortar that are boarded up currently is a lot. Um, I think there's other ways that they could find their funding uh to assist their brick and mortar businesses or their businesses in general. I think some of the money needs to be used again to uh assist the businesses with uh other tools and resources and communication is very important. Uh, I'd like to see uh more bilingual, more assistance to those businesses that are just still not confident in exactly what it is uh they're completing, whether, you know, it's a grant application, whether it's a survey, you know, there's still a lot of uh hesitation. And I think we just need to keep pushing until we, we capture those businesses in knowing that we're here to assist them. And so however we're gonna do that, I, I think we just need to continue, especially if we have the money to use uh in the next, you know, several years. What is that number anyway, Mr. Foster? How, how soon do we have to use this money that we have for our businesses? How, uh, what year do we have to have that used?
Yeah, well, you, you have until uh, until the end of twenty twenty-four to allocate money and you have until the end of twenty twenty-six to spend money. And then um, but then you have, you have some more flexibility in terms of part of the, part of the action that you took already was looking at the revenue loss calculation. So you moved seventy-five percent of that into the general fund. So there's really kind of no restrictions there in terms of timing. So um, that, that gives you some more flexibility. So there's a number of different things. And so um, again, you, you don't have to be in a rush to spend it all now. And so you got, so you got your first tranche and you've done a number of things already. Um, this is kind of the next step, but then there'll be um, there'll be another tranche that will come in July. And then um as the, as the recommendation um mentions too, there's a, nationally, there's some, some effort to go ahead and, and make uh ARPA more flexible. And so um Senate Bill thirty-eleven was approved a little over two months ago by the US Senate. Um, it was uh, it was considered and it was approved unanimously on the first day. And then it moved to the House and the House has been stuck behind um other legislation and, and some politics that's going on right now, um budget is, issues and everything else. And so we actually um, Ken reached out to um a staff member for Senator Padilla a couple of times and he was the co-sponsor for thirty-eleven. Um, so that, what we heard back, I think it was um the end of last week, um Ken heard from one of his staff members is that it's stuck with the House. There's no real kind of timing in terms of when they, with the holidays and everything else, when it's gonna kick forward. But they're still confident that it's gonna get um approved. And so I think what that will do, um Councilmember, is it, it will um, it will broaden if they approve that um, some of the infrastructure that you can do with, with ARPA. Um, right now, it's, it's restricted to do broadband water and sewer improvements. Um, it, it will allow you um to kind of do some more of those traditional um infrastructure things, uh streets, bridges, sidewalks, um some of those kinds of things. And so I think that will help out too in terms of things that you can do with it. And it will, it will also probably, I think, broaden some of that revenue loss calculation. That'll give you some more flexibility to get that money to your general fund um and, and not have all those restrictions that you've got in terms of um, of ARPA and, and some of the eligibility requirements. But um, again, I think this is meant to be um kind of a, a first next step is to help with the business community. And so um, and I, and I've heard a number of them talk about, um, it, it was a little bit shocking to see that um a lot of folks weren't doing things via email and those kinds of things. And our, our, you know, our staff, when we, I applaud the city for doing the street team and going out there and do that. But then we had to take those surveys and manually put them in and try to aggregate that information. It was pretty time-consuming. Um, so I think there, there are things that you can do to try to help. But if people are not knowledgeable and experienced and whatever and, and, you know, tech savvy and we're all trying to kind of go in that direction. But um, it, it's evolving and so we're certainly trying to do that. But, but I think that um, you know, the, the attempt to go up to nineteen hundred and I, I think still two hundred is, is a good representative sampling. Could have been more, absolutely, and would, would that have helped too? But yes, but I think it's, it's a, it's a, it's a first step in terms of trying to get feedback from those folks. And so I think it's, it's um, the same thing with, with some of the recommendations. Councilmembers are bumping yeah, um amounts up and funding allocations, those kinds of things. It's really meant to kind of s- try some of these programs and see how effective they are. We can always come back to you and, and, and seek to get more funding and, and increase those amounts. And so it's, we don't need to spend it all in the first year, um or even the second year. I think it's, it's, we do wanna make um some strides towards that, but it's, there's, there's gonna be opportunities for the next few years to go ahead and uh spend this money.
Yeah, again, I'd like to just, you know, put the press on uh the council and press on our leadership here uh to try again. And when you have a ninety percent of uh businesses saying that they uh were expressing the fact that they didn't receive assistance, right, during COVID and that they were impacted, impacted by the pandemic, we're still recovering. And that's a high percentage, ninety percent is high. So that means that they're not catching up anytime soon. And if there's a way to assist them with applying for monies that ultimately can assist them in getting their businesses up and operational, we need to do that. That's a, come, there's an additional push that I believe we need to make. And I really, again, want them to push for their business so that they could build it out and add to it to make it more viable for business uh and patrons to patronize. And so that's important for me. And so I'd like to see again a heavy push on the next coming year to get out of that nineteen hundred, more than two hundred applicants that are applying for, for funding to help their business and using tools and using other languages to do that, I think is essential and we need to make every efforts to do that. But thank you.
If I can add on to that, the first category of um assistance is the business assistance category and that was specifically designed to uh reach out to one, and one-on-one assistance for individual businesses to bring in a third-party consultant to be able to reach out to businesses to assist them with applying for um funding that may be out there, to assist them with um upgrading their website or creating a website if they don't have one. So that was really, that category is really designed for that one-on-one assistance to tailor it to that specific business's need. And then as, as Mr. Foster explained, you know, this is kind of a pilot program that once we start to reach out with the marketing, this program to the businesses, we can see and the count, come back to the council and ask, do you want to add more funding to that particular category of funding?
Yes. Thank you so much for that. I appreciate all the, the efforts and all the numbers here that uh you're providing. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Patterson, you had your hand up?
Yes, so just real brief. I just wanted to, yes, uh comment on something Mr. Montero said, I believe. Um, well, there is a Al Camino uh South uh SBDC on Hawthorne Boulevard, a small business development center. Haven't been in contact with them recently, but some time back I, I had been and they seem to have a good operation there that brought a lot of great benefits to the community. I would imagine that they could be a resource in some of these endeavors. Um, and so I wanna just suggest that that's considered, right? That we maybe part, formal, formal partnership with them uh to provide some of these services. So I, I'm pretty sure they already do some related services anyway and there's not, it's just not known to the community.
Yeah, a- a- absolutely, Councilmember. Uh, you know, I think, and I think, you know, we're doing work in fifteen cities and so I think that that's proven to be really effective is, is they have those, they have those relationships and they have the experience. And so I think um, I think it would, makes a lot of sense for the city to go ahead and capitalize on that. And so I, I think they're, they're natural for the city to reach out and see if they can help with that in terms of being, um, providing that business um counseling resource. And I think that, that, that's a, that's a great suggestion.
And I believe they, 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 they have because I just saw an email that come up about like maybe two weeks ago promoting those specific uh item that I just mentioned, you know, website developer, you know, that, you know, social media, how to teach business, how to do that. Yeah. And the other thing to think about is that um, most of the money that was given to this, for the uh, you know, uh SBA, so ABS, all those money that came for COVID relief for the small business and other business has been going away, literally. Cause now even I don't know if still there is money that to apply. Uh, because a lot of these, uh, it was last year.
There's a lot of money still left, but.
Yeah, it's still money, but a lot of these, other, uh, small, the loans has been, you know, dwelling slowly. Um, and that's why I say now it's still more, much more difficult even to get access to those, to those loans.
With the, the SBA, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt, interject, but the SBA EIDL loan and grant still is available. There's a lot of money available in that program. The application deadline is this month, unfortunately. Uh, hopefully you'll see, you hopefully it'll be extended, but, but yeah, after this month, they really, a lot of resources.
It'll be limited.
Okay, uh, Mayor Protem, did you, you haven't had it for a response?
Yes, I've had it up for quite a while, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, so um, I agree with the, with, with the uh, with the idea of partnering with the SBDC because they do teach uh businesses um marketing and tech, and they do have technical assistants available. Um, and um, I know that their office is closed now, but I also know how to get in touch with the executive director. So if you, if we want to do that, I think, which I think we should do, um, there, there, we, we can easily do that. Um, I think that we also should partner with the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. They have wonderful programs, um assisting businesses with all sorts of things, training their employees, uh recruiting people, recruiting uh employees, uh teaching employees how to um be more uh professional workers. Um, I think we should partner with both those agencies. Um, I, I assume it would, there would be a cost involved, but I think it would be worth the, the funds. I think it should be investigated. I think it would be worth the funds. It certainly would, I'm certainly, I'm certain that the um, the money allocated from COVID would cover that. Um, but yes, our businesses need a lot of extra help other than just um dollars. But I'm going to recommend that we go ahead and accept the recommendation of the um, of the, of the team here that, that uh made the um recommendations for um business assistance, business assistance grants and loans, uh marketing assistance programs, storefront reopening, general fund. Um, I'm also going to recommend that we uh follow uh Councilman Montero's suggestion and double the marketing assistance programs and the storefront reopening programs. Um, I think we need to put some money out on the street. I don't wanna, I want, I wanted us to continue to recruit. I want us to continue to move forward with getting uh, with, with going back again and seeing how much more of a response we could get. But I also wanna see money out on the street. I wanna see the money that you've recommended actually distributed so that the businesses can begin to see some result from uh, from our effort.
I second that.
Well, uh, Mr. Mr. City Attorney, do we need to uh, is this, does this need to come back as an allocation or is it a simple directive?
You could just give a, a directive for now.
Okay, so there we go, I concur. Do our other councilmember colleagues concur? Councilmember Patterson? Councilmember Patterson?
Yeah, let's do it.
Uh, Councilwoman English? Do you concur? Do you agree?
Are we gonna, are we gonna go out there again and try and recruit some more applicants?
That's what this all is about, yeah.
I, 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 I heard some of the recommendations, but mine was to try again and try and get some more applicants to apply. So that's my question. In, in these other efforts, are we gonna go back out and try and get some more applicants?
It sounded like this was part of that.
Okay, I, I didn't hear my part, so I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that's the money, that's the money aspect to be able to go and publicize this more. Okay, everybody concurs. Thank you, Councilmember.
And Mr. Mayor, just to, just to reiterate is that when these programs are in place, it's gonna be open to all the businesses that who wants the help.
Of course, absolutely. That's good that you highlighted that again.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, can I get additional clarification, please? Uh, as uh the request from Councilwoman Rais English, are we suspending all allocation of money until we go back out?
As uh the request from Councilwoman Reyes English, are we suspending all allocation of money until we go back out and survey the businesses?
Yeah, no, no suspension, no, no, no.
No, we're adding, we're adding, we're adding.
Continuing. And changing the dollar amount.
Okay, thank you for the question.
Change the dollar amount on those proposed two items that I the marketing and the storefront uh bond.
Thank you.
And I just and I just want to highlight for people who are not following the conversation we have here, the ARPA money is money that the federal government has given all cities in a certain amount. And we as a city council man council uh team and staff are supposed to allocate it to different elements in the community that will help the community, okay? So just get out of the hole that everybody's getting into. And so that's what we're doing, maybe we're making an adjustment here, okay? So this is not the city's money that we're just throwing, it's federal money, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Mister Clerk, item twenty-two, please.
Yes, uh, City of Hawthorne Investment Report for a quarter ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council receive, approve and file and file the City of Hawthorne's investment report for the quarter ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
I make a motion?
Back and roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Uh, Miss Mister Clerk, item twenty-three, which is a review of the financial report for this quarter?
Correct, so review of the quarter one financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council receive, approve and file the quarter one financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I make a motion?
Back and.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
So the the next item is the next item, so the city manager's consent cal consent calendar, there's items twenty-five through thirty-one. Uh, Mister City Manager, can you just read those items into the record or yeah, you need to read those into the record, it's a lot of stuff.
Absolutely, uh, we have item twenty-five, uh agreement between the City of Hawthorne and DRC Engineering INC. For survey surveying services. Item twenty-six, agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Sally Rodriguez to provide uh project management services for Public Works Intergov Project and approve approval of the blanket purchase order uh in the non-to exten non-to exceed amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Item twenty-seven, amendment to number one to the agreement for homeless homelessness coordinator services with St. Margaret Center Catholic Charities of Los Angeles, INC. Item twenty-eight, uh twenty twenty-two centennial update event. Uh, item twenty-nine, second amendment to the executive negotiation agreement, ENA with Skid Row Housing Trust. Item thirty, sewer improvement project twenty twenty-two, city project number twenty-one zero seven, out to bid. Uh, last item, item thirty-one, three-year renewal of Microsoft Enterprise Agreement Software Licensing Agreement via Dell Technologies Custodian of the Riverside County, California State Government Purchasing Agreement to cover software licensing uh for continued use. Mister Mayor, that concludes my city manager consent calendar. May I get a motion to approve items twenty-one, no, excuse me, twenty-five through thirty-one?
I'd like to pull item twenty-nine for discussion, please.
I move on all other items?
I'd like to pull item twenty-eight, sorry.
Anybody, yeah, I have I I have a motion.
Second.
Okay, uh, so what was the item that was pulled though?
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Um, and yeah, so we're gonna we're gonna vote on all the other items, but there is a uh discussion on item twenty-eight. But uh Mayor Proton will be able to comment on the other item that you mentioned. I make a motion then?
Second, okay, go ahead, gay David.
Roll call vote, please.
Was that seconded by Councilmember Patterson?
I think we're referring to Councilmember Patterson.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Uh, before the discussion, item twenty-eight, which uh is a larger discussion, possibly. Um, Mayor Proton, just your comments on the item that you wanted to comment on?
It was twenty-eight.
Oh, so it's the same thing, okay.
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
No, twenty-nine was not mine.
Twenty-nine is missing English.
Okay, go ahead, Wes.
All right, so I wanted to uh, well, I wanted to basically uh have a little bit of a discussion on twenty-eight because I wanted um I I really am, I commend uh Vaughn for um for for setting out the uh the 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 uh framework for a really great event, uh a four-day event. And I wanted him to explain what uh what what he has planned and and also to offer my assistance.
Absolutely, if I can have a floor, I can proceed.
But just just go ahead and uh do that and then we'll just move on to uh discussion on twenty-nine.
Okay, absolutely. So uh staff has prepared a four-day event to uh to bring in our hundred year of uh incorporation. And with that four-day event, uh we're looking at having a formal sit-down dinner uh Friday at Memorial Center uh with a series of guest speakers, uh pictures, memories and a slideshow. Entering to the next day, uh per the agenda, we were asking for a recommendation from uh council to proceed with a parade that would start somewhere around one-thirty Fort Street, uh head northbound down Hawthorne, concluding at City Hall to a block party that would have a stage that would have uh free food, free entertainment, free games and possibly a car show that would pay a homage to nineteen uh twenty-one. Uh, Sunday, we would have a open house at the Historical Museum in Hawthorne that's located at Jem Thorpe Park. At that time, uh we would give tours, uh we would have some type of a refreshment breakfast, lunch that hasn't been determined yet. And then on that Tuesday, we would uh come to City Hall, we would open our time capsule and also have speakers and also reinsert a time capsule uh for revealing twenty-five years, fifty years or a hundred years later. So staff is just looking for recommendations as far as uh tailoring the events that we're proposing.
Can you, can we, can we go ahead and just set a set this for uh the next meeting so we can have a more robust conversation?
Okay.
The discussion? Okay, and then like so we can absorb it and then just do, you know, ask individual questions and just talk as a group. All right, so item twenty-nine? Now, this is this is a good layout.
I concur.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, I I I'm not quite um as informed uh on this uh Skid Row Housing Trust development. Uh, I came in after everything was uh pretty much agreed upon and voted upon. However, I have some concerns with regards to the continuous extension that this developer has. And I also want to know from the twenty-twenty exclusive negotiation agreement on some of the uh language that's in the agreement, specifically section one of the nature of the negotiations, which is item uh section one, A Good Faith, um with regards to where it says uh in parentheses or in caption where uh which may necessitate amendment or modifications to accommodate developers' proposed development. How many times are we going to have to extend the development? And I want to know why is that even in there considering uh all the amendments and all the in good faith, we've been trying to get the pro the project developed? So I have some concerns and um I don't know whether or not this is something that was even thought out fully. I believe it was uh done pretty quickly and uh I have some concerns with it. So I want to be able to get more into exactly what the program that they're offering is. And uh I'm looking actually to table the item for further discussion and until my concerns are addressed that I feel comfortable moving forward.
Uh, what if the rest of the council want to do, does anybody want to make a motion either way, accept the table or what?
Um, may I, goodness, may I, may I give a little bit of history on this? Um, it it does precede the um the the newer council members who were elected at the last election. If this process began a few years back before, you know, my appointment as well. But it started off with a um a plan by the city to develop a a veterans housing, low-income veterans housing project. And basically, this is a using the the property of the successor agency that's on Corderi Avenue. Um, and we start, it it's took a long time because we started with another developer. And from what I have heard is that um the other the other developer wanted to build of more units than what the city preferred. So the the city was the Skid Row Housing, Skid Road Trust Housing came in as a second developer and we entered into a exclusive negotiation agreement towards December of twenty twenty. And the only thing that the ENA does is that you were, this is a uh a provision in which an agreement that allows the city to continue to negotiate with the developer, with Skid Row, to come up with a a development and disposition and loan agreement that is basically, this doesn't uh it uses the sus the funds from the successor agency and and basically using those type of twenty percent set aside uh money to develop property for low-income housing for veterans. And and this is a project in which last proposal, there were a total of eighteen units to be developed on Corderi for this purpose. Um, so the the develop, the DDLA, the disposition, development and loan agreement will come back to city council, there'll be a public hearing. But this is a very uh complex process in which there has to be a funding through uh state uh grants. And then later on, the developer has to also apply for federal funding grants and to subsidize what the successor agency is going to provide. So the DDLA is uh coming down the line, probably we're trying to finalize the DDLA for council approval and have public hearing by end of this year. But um there are other um it it's a very complex and lengthy document that has to be still further um negotiated. We're almost at its conclusion and that will come to city council early part of next year. That DDLA can start the actual um development of this project. But um it and it there'll be a public hearing and it's that portion of the DDLA is the city council can approve or disapprove. But in terms of this ENA agreement, it's set to expire with Skid Row on December twenty-fourth. And they have paid a ten thousand dollar deposit that's non-refundable. Um, it in in with the expectation that we're going to continue to develop this and 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 continue with the negotiation for hopefully eventual development of this low-income housing, which which is also needed um because of the um the certain funds from successor agency that's supposed to be used for development of low-income housing and things of that nature. So we're in a situation where we're very close to finalizing the DDLA, which the this ENA is is that's the purpose of it. It's a very complex procedure. It involves consultants and and grant application. And I understand that because of this project, uh HCD agreed to give a grant to this to this project. So based on this project, there's there is few million dollars that HCD will uh will provide as a grant fund. So at this point, you know, all this does is to extend the the negotiations for the DDLA to come back to city council. At that point, we'll go over the details of the DDLA, but this is just for the continuation of negotiation so that it can come back to city council.
So this is an extension until it can come back to city council. We're not providing any loan at this time. It sounds to me that the selection of this entity was not readily prepared to take on a project at the magnitude that it is with no funding secured to make the build out. That's my opinion. And now now they're asking for additional funding because they don't have the money to do it. And that's the extension of it all, that's why they need extensions.
The the funding and the loan component comes in through the DDLA. This is just a continuation, this uh authorizes continuation of negotiation for that DDLA. But all the the loans and things of that nature will come through the DDLA that's not before the council right now.
Okay, I I want to make sure that the public comment
Yes.
takes place before the vote. That's what I want to, I want to hear public comment.
Yes, for for DDLA that that will be provided, there will be a public hearing for that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I I wanted to interject, I I need I haven't made comments since, so yeah, I think we moved along, made a lot of progress here. Um, this is something that did take place with with the previous council before my two colleagues uh joined the council. Uh, we did go out to bid and there were there were a lot of people that were not ready to undertake this uh this I would say challenge, so this group stepped up to the plate. We did have somebody else, they didn't make it through, so I really don't want to stall this, I don't want to, I I just want to make sure I go forward. So I'm I'm going to be making a motion, okay?
Uh.
I'll second it, but I also have
Go ahead.
question, a comment question.
I have I have no problem with extending their uh.
Councilmember Patterson first and then Mayor Proton, I'm sorry, I just want to just discussion of the topic, okay?
Yeah, no problem extending this this uh negotiation period with them, but I I agree with uh the councilwoman that I want to make sure we're not, we don't rush into a final agreement so that there is definitely appropriate opportunity to be brought up to speed about entire agreement, uh what's to be expected. And uh we're not kind of rushed to vote on this uh future DDLA agreement.
So it will come back to council, um probably early part of next year once the parties, the cities, successor agency finishes negotiating with Skid Row. So that's the DDLA is the full encompassing document that will allow development, that will have provisions for loans and um the use of the excess funds from from successor agencies and things of that nature. So this is just a simple um agreement extension to continue with the negotiation. And at this point, because the expiration date is the twenty-fourth of December and, you know, they made a non-refundable deposit. This is a nonprofit agency that made a a ten thousand dollar deposit for this that's non-refundable. And I I think that um.
No, we got that, we got that, it's totally cool, we just want to make sure that whatever's negotiated, we have opportunity to really digest it before.
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Proton, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, um I understand, uh Mister City Attorney, you said low-income housing. My understanding is that this is a veterans housing project, is that not the case still?
It is a veterans housing project, but it's for low-income veterans.
Low-income veterans, yes, but it is it is for veterans.
It is, it it is, but it it qualifies as low-income housing.
What is low-income, okay?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero, go ahead.
Yeah, um, let me say that uh the reason that we picked Skid Row is because they were willing to develop this project based on our city guidelines and based on what we told them. Because the other developer that actually uh was first uh came came and promised, okay, we're going to build the eighteen. And then they came back and say, oh, no, we cannot do eighteen, we're going to, we're going to do fifty. So they wanted to make more apartment unit over there on one acre land. That was not conducive to for our goal and objective of having uh only eighteen units for veterans, low-income veterans. So that's the reason that the the Skid Row, because they're nonprofit, like Mister uh Kim said, they had to have time to apply for money to come from the state and from the federal government. And we know sometimes this thing takes time. So I'm I'm in agreement that, you know, we we have a chance to come back next year and decide how we going with this DDA. But uh I want to to move this project forward just to keep keep going with the negotiation.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, roll call vote, please.
To be clear, voting on item twenty-eight and twenty-nine?
Yeah, uh, well, twenty-nine, it's already been moved, we're just discussing twenty-nine.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, just for the record, did we, did I make the motion on everything except twenty-nine or was it twenty-eight?
Now, to my understanding, you made a motion on everything except for twenty-eight and twenty-nine?
Correct.
Okay, except twenty-nine, okay.
The twenty-eight and twenty-nine?
No, I think I made, it was everything.
Just make a motion for twenty-eight and Just make a motion for twenty eight and twenty nine.
Make a motion for twenty eight and twenty nine, just to cover it, okay?
Alright, Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The voter reflects mayor and councilmembers voting yes.
Just uh make double sure whichever, if there was another previous, it was incorporated, just that supersedes this.
Perfect, thank you.
Mister City Attorney, you have your consent calendar, go ahead and read your items into the record.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um so I have three items on the city attorney consent calendar. The first item is to uh approve agreements regarding consultant costs between the city of Hawthorne and. Pecan Co- Corporation, um second item is approval to participate in a national opioid settlement. Which will result in the receipt of funding for services to prevent, remediate and abate opioid addiction. And and for city council's approval of settlement of a lawsuit between Lauren McCall and City of Hawthorne at all.
I make a motion?
Ake.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Um yes.
The voter reflects mayor and councilmembers voting yes.
Okay, uh. Take a look, big look here, alright, so we're at the discussion items. Councilmember English, your item, please.
Uh yes, so. Last week, uh Thursday, mayor and council members, we hosted our first cannabis program working committee meeting. Um that I um am chairing and uh. I have a a good, a good board and I'm thankful for that, so thank you again, mayor, for the appointment. Um there was discussion and uh we we were about two hours, uh two and a half hours uh of this committee meeting, the first. And we got acquainted with um uh the consultant and we got uh to be able to understand a little bit more exactly. Uh how we're gonna be collaborating and working forward to to draft policy ordinances around our cannabis program. Um I wanna report that uh E J M A uh consultants. Were unanimously selected by the working group committee as our consultants. I also want to make mention that a couple of of discussions came up that I wanna bring to your attention. Um there was discussion uh at our last council meeting, uh I believe the special council meeting where all council members selected. Uh the types of licensings that would be issued, uh we talked about retail, we talked about uh manufacturing cultivation. We talked about uh transportation, which is delivery and the other one that came up that I uh think it would be beneficial to the South Bay region. Especially for the city in the South Bay that's gonna be uh working on a cannabis program is testing. And testing is regulated by the state, testing is to test product to assure that it's um. Uh legal product, more importantly, that it has um all the requirements that is needed. And the businesses that have, say for instance, Cannabis Now are required to test product. And right now, there's a lot of uh testing in Los Angeles and other areas, other regions, but I thought testing would be another component that we could add. For licensing, so I wanted to bring that to the board, the council for for further um direction. And then there was also mention of lounge, which uh other cities such as West Hollywood has. West Hollywood has, I believe, a cafe and they have a lounge and not everybody has a lounge that are licensed in the city of West Hollywood, however. Uh when I was visiting one, they were getting ready to open a lounge, so um this is two. Two items that uh you know, we we could obviously uh get more information on and then ultimately bring it to the council later. For a a vote, however, uh I I am, I'm going leaning towards the testing component. Just because that's important, I'm not so much in favor of lounge, so just to leave it there for you all to um, you know. Discuss, uh it again, this is a, this is a discussion, it's not quite yet an action. That would be brought to the council at a later time for uh a vote.
Oh, and the councilwoman English, thanks for bringing these items up to our, you know, attention as a result of the meetings, so. Um I'd like to ask our city attorney, if you can give us a. A legal confidential as to our smoking ordinances and how it relates to this, because if we have a s- smoking ordinance that. Uh is already in effect inside all our establishments in the city of Hawthorne, then that would trump the lounge licensing. We can't make an exception for this type of stuff, so.
It is something.
So, yes, no, well, then let's get this, I would I would rather have that as a legal confidential, so we could review and just see how it all. How it all mixes up.
Um I I could just tell you that it would require some amendment to the ordinance, including the. Um the secondhand uh uh smoking ordinance that was just passed by council today, that would go into effect in thirty days.
Okay.
But I don't think that would, if the council, let me just say this, um the reason why. The councilwoman Reyes English brought this up as discussion action item is that in January, we're gonna come back. With a recommended contract for E S M A planning, uh that was recommended by the working committee unanimously, so. In order to come back with the ne- further negotiation for the the clauses in this agreement. Uh to be brought back to city council for approval, we, they need to know the. All different types of license that the city council is willing to allow as an option, it it's not that. You know, the 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 actual ordinance to allow specific type of license.
Okay.
Will be brought back later, but this is for the purpose of of the consultant's agreement, so that um. But you know, just even lounge is something that is to keep it as an option for the consultant to provide. Uh and provide work for the city, so um.
Can I just add real quick? Mister Kim and Mayor, you know, when you think of lounge, it doesn't necessarily mean uh vaping, smoking, okay? It could also be edibles.
Yeah, that.
So, so if you think of a lounge license and you wanna take the bad actors and the illegal activity from the streets. And provide a safe haven in which you could go and sit and uh order something that you're gonna be consuming. Doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna be in there uh do, you know, it's it's gonna be our preference, right? It's gonna be what the selection of the council chooses, but uh let, I'm just trying to say. Uh I I I I really, really hope that some of you will take uh the efforts. On your time to go out and. Learn some of the things that are happening in around cannabis and visit some of these sites, so that you could truly understand what that means. Again, I'm not for lounge, um I'm more for testing to assure that the product is regulated and mandated. By the state and then it's got a seal of approval before it's it's sold, so that's my thing.
No, and and I appreciate that, um and but the city attorney knows, we just need to cover all angles, uh I don't know what it entails, I I mean. It's not like I hung out at one of these lounges or gone to visit some of these, well, I've I'm familiar with the process and the facilities, but. Um yeah, just cover all our angles, of course, the decision's not being made today. Councilmember Patterson or Montero, which one goes first?
Patterson was first.
So, yeah, I I would also say, uh yeah, let's include testing, right, in. This uh agreement with uh the consultant, but um I I don't think we really, or I I I'm not really interested in. Going down the the line of trying to figure it out, figuring out having a lounge in the city, so I mean, if you guys wanna. You know, have the consultant talk to us about that option, like, there's nothing wrong with getting information, but it's not something that really piques my interest.
Councilmember Montero?
Okay, thank you, Mister Mayor, yeah, um I do agree about the testing, yeah, because it's very important for the product to be safe, right? Because there is a lot of things that needs to be done, because you know, like, some of these products, make sure they don't have pesticides and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's very good to have testing, the lounge thing is 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 just an option, right? Just in case uh down the road, if somebody wants to open a lounge, but it's not for smoking. Okay, cuz they have different type of lounges, I have never been in a, in the lounge, because I hate smoke anyway, but the. The lounge is another, is another just open mind, that it could be down the road, somebody would come and say. I wanna open the lounge in in uh in City of Hawthorne, so so that's the kinda thing, just to keep an open mind. That lunch is not just, is not just a s- a smoking, it's not like Mister English said, it is able, uh I've, uh no, not, they have this.
Ed- edible.
Edible, whatever, so uh so it would not affect per se our our ordinance on secondhand smoking. Uh because, so that's what I'm saying, is just to keep our our options open, what type of license for the future. But I do agree with testing is very important, yes.
Okay, um so I appreciate you bringing this forward, Councilmember English, and it's just an awareness, it's, you're kind of in essence reporting now.
Right.
And just having us think about these things, so that when uh staff ends up developing something, we'll kind of have our, have already thought about this stuff.
Can we um, can we get a vote to, so that we can give a direction to the um. To E S M A planning, uh our consultants to work out an agreement, so um. If we can get a vote on on testing and lounge license uh for. To be part of the consultant agreement, not, not, I I wanna clarify, it's not for the city to approve these license. It's just so that it can be included with the consultant in their agreement that will come back to you for approval.
Uh if I can go ahead and and make a motion for the testing component, if I could get a second for testing?
Uh it's interesting you wrote it up like that, okay?
And it's the way, it's it's the way it's on the script.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
If I could get a vote for the testing, uh city clerk, can you make?
Roll call vote, please, Mister City Clerk, roll call vote. Mister City Clerk?
Is, yes.
Um alright, sorry about that, had to run to the restroom, Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The voter reflects mayor and councilmembers voting yes.
You, when you say you ran to the restroom, you must have ran back real fast.
I I literally ran, just, yeah, just for you guys.
Um with regards to uh lounge licensing for cannabis program, uh anyone wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a motion to in include that in the agreement, let them provide us information.
I second that.
Roll call?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yeah, I was just waiting for you to do it.
Uh Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
I'm gonna uh, I'm gonna stay neutral on this, I still want more information.
Alright, Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The voter reflects mayor and councilmembers voting yes, except for Councilmember Reyes English abstaining.
Thank you.
And the only reason I voted yes is just because our staff, our our city attorney is just telling us that. It's not an agreement that we are going to have it, we're just laying out the, we're having our, we're having our team look at it.
Contract. Beyond that.
That's it, that's all it means.
Right.
Councilmember Valentine, item thirty eight, beautification of Hawthorne, go ahead.
Yes, um so Eric, would you please bring up the uh the photograph, thank you, so. I would like the city of Hawthorne to take an interest in beautifying the city through landscaping and art. So through ornamental landscaping and art, so this is phase one. Um so with phase one, the city attorney is directed to draft a resolution as follows. Owners and residents of single family housing are asked to plant six colorful plants in the parkway. In front of those homes and maintain those plants, desert plants and ocean friendly plants are encouraged. But they must be colorful, beginning July first twenty twenty two and every year thereafter. The city of Hawthorne will award a prize to the resident who is found to have the best display of six colorful plants in his or her parkway. And the reason for this, for choosing a number is so that it is um something that that we can actually evaluate. Um with a, with a definite nu- the number, the contest and prize will be determined by the city and manager and staff. The awardee will also receive public recognition from the city council, so this is phase one of what I would like to see. As a beautification effort, phase two, um I, um if this is approved, then we will talk. We will, we will have another phase in which we will talk about what to be done about multifamily housing. And another phase three about how to promote art in the city of Hawthorne, but this is phase one for the residential areas. So I will move to um to ask the city attorney to bring a resolution to the county, to the, before the council.
Is this discussion at any time here?
Yes, it is.
Okay, can, can we have some discussion?
Yeah, but you could also request for him to bring something back, but this is part discussion, go ahead.
Yes. Okay, so um uh uh city attorney, where'd you go? Oh, there you go, Mister Kim, uh. Can you bring back a feasibility study and giving us uh roughly what the cost is gonna be to Public Works, because as we all know. There's sidewalk uh throughout the city, it's not all grass and it's not easy accessible, some of the sidewalk might have to be broken up. Some of the sidewalk might need to be removed so that uh planting can take place, so I've seen already some. Homeowners that have uh taken out sidewalk and I've inquired on whether or not that city sidewalk or if it's their sidewalk.
That's actually a good question.
And uh I'm concerned, because if we're asking for homeowners to make uh changes to their beautification and their facade. Uh where city property is concerned, I have a concern of whether or not we're gonna be having to pay for sidewalk to be removed. And I don't mean all sidewalk, I'm talking about the perimeter of of the curb. To the sidewalk, because I saw what, I saw the photos that were posted, so can you just bring back a feasibility? Whether or not there's gonna be any feasibility uh cost to the city, that's what I wanna know. I think, I think it's, I think it's a great uh effort to beautify our uh streetscape. But uh I just need to know whether or not there's gonna be a a cost to the city. Uh again, I have seen homes that have taken up sidewalk and I've called and I've asked, is this been approved? Was this uh permission by the city or did residents do it, take it upon themselves?
Well, actually.
Well, I'm making a distinction between the parkway and the sidewalk, I'm not asking for them, I'm not asking for any work to be done on the sidewalk, this is for the parkway. And and whatever they do on the parkway, they would be responsible for doing it, they would, they would, they would pay the cost for plant, making those plantings.
Yeah, but you have to understand that there's, there's seem, there's, you have to see between the curb. The pictures that you just had a minute ago showing flower beds lining the curb.
They're on the parkway, not the curb, not the sidewalk.
That's, that's what I'm saying, no, there's a sidewalk, there's a curb, five, three, four, three, that's the curb. The flowers are in 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 this area, some of the area is not open for planting, some of this area is cement sidewalk. Some cement is extended out to the curb, you have to, you ha- I've seen sidewalks that have that, so.
No, but but Councilmember English, I know, I I I understand what you're saying, but that's a bigger issue, that's somebody that's. Uh destroying city property without getting permits.
And that's why I'm, that's why, that's why I'm questioning, like, at this point here, who's, who's responsible for this planting area? The homeowner or the city?
The planting, the planting would be done by the homeowner.
Okay, and who owns this section of property on the curb?
The city owns the the parkway.
Okay, that's a come, I want to know with the feasibility, what is gonna cost us, okay? To uh ultimately hand over to the homeowner who wants to plant this area and they have to be responsible for that. What that's gonna cost us, because not all the area that you're showing here, these flowers are open in soft, soft uh. Dirt that you could easily plant, some of it is cement, that we need to be removed.
So for clarification, um.
I need a feasibility, I need Public Works to provide the council, the council to make a feasibility of the areas in the city of Hawthorne. That would be, was, you know, Public Works responsibility and 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 make an assessment on how much cement. Cement would have to be removed to accommodate this type of project.
So I will do, uh I'll work with Public Works to do a feasibility study for this, um it or. In in terms of the resolution that uh Councilwoman Valentine made a directive on, is that for. Applies to all homes, uh single family homes, even when they don't have a parkway as. This uh as Councilwoman.
Well.
Reyes English mentioned.
Okay, so we're, what we're saying is. That those who, that, I mean, I I I'm.
that those who that, I mean, I I I'm I'm I believe the single-family homes have parkways, I don't know that there there are some that there may be some that don't have parkways, but I assume that they all have parkways.
They they don't, Councilmember Valentine. Uh drive down, drive down Euclid, uh what I'm trying to see, drive down uh next to DMV, what street is that?
Oh, I know what you I know what you're saying, and Councilwoman, I know what you're saying.
Not all those, not all those homes.
But Mayor Proton, all you gotta do is just modify this thing, whatever you're suggesting, to allow for it uh for all those that have existing.
Right, I I'm not, I'm not suggesting that anyone do construction on their parkways. So if you don't have, if they don't have a parkway with dirt that they could easily make a planting in, then they wouldn't be able to enter the contest.
That's it, okay, so.
So this would apply to those who have parkways that.
Only, only.
We can make it so that it 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 applies to those who have parkways with with movable earth.
Where is it, where is that city at that you have those pictures from? What city is that?
It's the city of Hawthorne, but that those the pictures are not real, the pictures are virtual.
I was gonna say, dang, that's a pretty nice uh.
Alright guys, so we good? Alright, but listen, let's talk about it, and no, but I understand, uh Councilwoman English. Um I don't wanna say it's a separate issue, but um I I am concerned for those people that do break uh their sidewalk to extend the lawn all the way to the to connect it with the parkway.
Or guess what, they add, they add, they remove our sidewalk and they add their own brick tile, their own brick uh pieces.
And uh city manager and uh uh city attorney and code, let's try to just come up with uh if we have it, if you if you guys can take a survey and have like our code enforcement take a look, because that's definitely not allowed. That's city-laid concrete, okay? Can you give us like, can you give us a a a white note paper, Mr. City Attorney?
What, I'm sorry, what?
Can you give us like a report on that, like from some feedback from our Public Works?
Sure.
Team with respects to any, you know, what the what's been going on with people breaking sidewalk to extend the greenery. Okay, Councilmember Montero, item thirty-nine, please.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor, um first I wanna say uh thank you for the uh all our constituents who called today uh for us to default to the uh one hundred percent green. Um basically, you know, the power of choice is is ours, right? Because we we can decide uh if we wanna be a part of the uh of a one hundred percent green or not, and this would not take the fact back to until October twenty twenty-two, okay? Uh but basically, I think it is the right moment for us to make a decision, maybe uh in January at the next meeting, uh because the fact that we can get to the one hundred percent green that is affordable, safe, reliable, recency, and clean power, right, renewable power. Uh and it's not going to affect the billing that much. Because like Ted explained, right now, uh twenty twenty-two, our Clean Power Alliance customers is going to get a reduction in their bills. Uh and and Southern California customers gonna see an increase in their bills. And between the right now, between the clean and and the one hundred percent, the the customers is gonna only see a three percent increase starting in November twenty twenty-two, almost a year from now. Okay, and the fact that the the Clean Power Alliance have the program that all low-income customers, that is about forty-four percent of our constituent, they will not see their bill increase maybe one dollar a month if we go one hundred percent clean. And the reason that I brought this up, because even I didn't bring it up in in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen or even twenty twenty was because of the COVID and a lot of people having a time, but now, because I because in the past it was ten percent different. But now it's only three percent. Uh and and I said, like, our customer is not gonna see that until November twenty twenty-two. Um and I think it's the right moment for us to do it, uh because when you see what the with the global warming and what they what happened to the environment. Um and the fact that, you know, LA County, so all the non-incorporated areas around us is gonna be one hundred percent clean power, because they voted last week. All the LA County cities and non-incorporated areas is gonna be one hundred percent. So I think we just, we should be, because uh the future of CPA is to deliver renewable energy. And believe it or not, even Southern California Edison had to change their way to deliver clean power. Uh the gas companies do it, so all of them are going towards this clean power, clean energy because of the uh uh gas emissions and and all the mandates from the federal and from the state of California to clean up our ozone. So I think Hawthorne could be one of the pioneers of these thirty-two communities that is already going towards one hundred percent clean. So I would suggest, if if my colleagues would concur, for uh Mr. Kim to bring us uh an ordinance or a resolution uh for the next meeting for us to to default to one hundred percent.
Um I.
Go ahead.
May I?
And it will have more discussion and public hearing also, Ms. Valentine, on that time, okay?
Well, you know, you could always request for him to bring it back and the discussion could be had there, but if you wanna give some feedback now, you can, I guess.
Oh yeah, no, no, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to um to get some information, I know that there are some cities that have already adopted it.
Yes.
And there are some cities that have not, I would like to get um the experience of at least three cities that have gone one hundred percent. Um and get their experience and and bring back information on that. What what has been their experience as far as cost, as far as the satisfaction, as as far as reliability? Uh what has been their experience?
It sounds like it's probably gonna be be positive, trend towards the positive, so.
It is all positive, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean, that's not, that information is not gonna hurt us.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, and it's also, there is a, there is a website, uh there is a link um that I can forward for all of you to to check it out, uh about the clean power and the one hundred percent and to see all the comments that people have put in there. And even tonight, believe it or not, it was one of the board of directors from the Clean Power Alliance that is a Councilwoman for the city of um Ohio that called in to to support the one hundred, so. Um but there is a lot of cities, you know, like Manhattan Beach, Redondo Beach, you know, uh there there is a lot of Chicago city. Uh so we have a lot of cities out there that is already been a hundred percent. And like I said, in LA County have voted on non-incorporated areas to go one hundred percent. Uh and this default would not happen till October twenty twenty-two. But uh and even when if we bring a resolution on ordinance for the next meeting, we would have to have, you know, public hearings and comments and discussion and more feedback of how this is 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 a very, it's a good thing for us, it's not a bad thing.
Okay, sounds good, thank you for the recommendation.
Concur.
Well, yeah, you already requested it to be, I mean, we could debate it later.
Okay, Mr. Kim, you hear that, right?
You see how I said that, that we can debate? No, no, it sounds like a good idea, man, this is like a blessing. But uh we just, we just definitely wanna like kinda just uh um quantify the savings too, you know?
Oh yeah, believe it or not, right now, it it is a saving, tell you the truth. Uh because in the past, we couldn't do it because it was ten percent, that's why I never brought it up. But now since I just see that maybe only sixty percent of the residents is gonna pay uh only three percent more starting in November twenty twenty-two. And our low-income family is not gonna pay for it, they're gonna get it for free. And it's a forty-four percent of our residents that are low-income customers.
Okay.
It's supposed to take advantage of the system right now, to tell you the truth, basically, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Uh and staff has been directed. Also, now we have the uh reports, recommendation, uh elected officials' reports. Alright, so just your reports, guys, alright, let's start off with our city treasurer.
Good evening, everyone, uh great meeting, happy to be here. Um yeah, you know, I had some uh meetings with the finance department and Hawthorne's doing well. Uh you know, and I'm still investing uh the reserves uh that I uh put in the previous meeting, so I've been selectively, you know, investing those in the uh the latter for the longer-term investments. Um and other than that, uh I will keep it to that, and we're just, you know, it's it's an interesting time with interest rates, and I think inflation's a real thing, so that's why I'm doing this kind of rolling process, like not doing all the money at once and kind of uh waiting, because I think, you know, the the inflationary pressures and all that are really kind of probably, we're gonna have to do something with increasing interest rates. And I think I've bored you enough uh for now, so I'll leave you to that, cheers.
Thank you, sir, uh Mr. City Clerk. Um and it sounds like you've been having some nice uh interesting, good stuff happening from your office.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mayor, uh I wanna thank everyone for watching from home. Um the our fourteen watchers from on YouTube and everyone else watching on cable TV. So about two weeks ago, we were able to provide produce to almost four hundred families and toys to over two hundred and fifty kids um at our food and toy giveaway, so I wanna thank our volunteers. And again, the American Heart Association for providing the produce, uh as well as everyone who donated the toys. Um I also wanna thank Public Works for helping us with the trash bins, um we'll be out there again this Saturday at ten AM. Um last week, through the collaboration with Al Camino College and Santa Monica College, we held two Zoom meetings for people interested in going back to college, so I wanna thank everyone who showed up. Um it was a good turnout and just having those conversations with a lot of our our neighbors was amazing. Um I wanna commend Vaughn and all the city staff involved with the roller skates and backpack giveaway last Saturday. Um I was told there's a great response from the community, also thanks for putting on the Winter Wonderland, uh that's taking place this Saturday from four to nine PM, uh my family's definitely looking forward to attending. Um and last but not least, uh in regards to COVID nineteen, um again, in for information on locations to get vaccinated and boosters, please go to vaccinated vaccinatelacounty.com. Uh they have information on appointments as well as uh walking locations. And that's it, uh just wanna uh just give a happy holidays to everyone, to the council, staff members, and all the neighbors watching, thank you.
Thank you, sir, uh Councilwoman raised English.
Uh yes, thank you, Mayor. Um I attended the staff holiday luncheon, I'd like to thank all of those that helped make that happen. Uh city manager, thank you for your help and efforts. Uh Merry Christmas to all our staff, our department heads, and most importantly, Public Works, our um working uh workforce, thank you so much. Uh I also want to thank uh Councilmember Montero and Patterson. Uh I was able to host the fourteenth annual Operation Gobble, uh great success there with great partners in the community. We were able to provide roughly seven hundred families with turkeys. And turkeys were coming from uh everywhere, they were coming out of our ears, I couldn't believe how people were very gracious. Although some of the uh turkeys uh went to other families that are outside of Hawthorne, we do our best to um, you know, help here first, and then obviously, any any of those that uh are from outside, um you know, obviously, they won't turn away, we provided them turkeys also. Um I want to also commend uh the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce, they had a turkey giveaway, roughly three hundred and fifty. I attended that and saw their efforts, and the line was wrapped around the corner, I was actually quite surprised uh with how many people were there for that event, and people from Inglewood and Lawndale too. So it sounds like there's great need in the community when it comes to um uh turkeys and food and other uh resources. Um we also uh had a telehealth van, uh ribbon cutting. And thank you, uh Councilmember Montero, again, Councilmember Patterson, for your words that I was able to express. And Mayor, I gave some words and remarks, uh unfortunately, you were not able to come, but I provided some remarks. Um telehealth van is working in in collaboration with Oracle, which is building out the program to assure that it's capturing the numbers uh of patients being seen by telehealth van. Telehealth van is providing mental health and um uh other services from this from the comfort of their van. And they're also working in collaboration with UCLA, UCLA was also here, Oracle was here. Uh we had well over a hundred people or if not more, and we also had um partnerships and those that are also assisting such as YG. And having said that, I wanna make sure that uh I'm addressing some of the remarks that were made because in my opinion, I'm gonna condemn what I felt was racist and uh very uh slanderous remarks with regards to um the connotation that every black man is a gangster. And I have to say that, and I hope that every black man here and black community members know that there's no room for that type of tone, little little alone um energy. As a grandmother of seven black grandbabies and a mother of three adult black daughters, uh I condemn that, and so I just wanna make sure and voice my opinion there. And I believe that YG is doing everything he can to change the momentum in how people engage uh that have mental health issues that need assistance, and so I wanna make sure that uh their props are given properly and appreciated for what they're doing and trying to help to address mental health and those types of services. Um I want to make mention that this uh Tuesday, the twenty-first, uh from two to four, we're gonna be doing a toy giveaway here at City Hall, I wanna thank again uh Vaughn and our community outreach. Uh wanna thank Mr. Kim, uh it's gonna be from two to four, and it's for toys and it's uh an event that Vaughn put together along with his staff at the Wreckin Parks, and so I hope um that the council could come together collectively. We used to have those events, if you remember, Mayor, across the street before the hotel was built. We had Santa, we had the Christmas tree, and we had um the fire department come out, and we had Santa. And so we don't have that anymore, and so I I hope that uh Tuesday, the twenty-first, you're all able to come and just uh share with uh some cocoa and some cookies and some fondue and give um some toys out to the community and take some pictures and close out this year uh on a on a, you know, um I I would say honest and more importantly, a good note in closing out this year, we've done a lot in the year, especially for myself and Councilmember Patterson that just came on, it's been already a year, I can't believe it's already been a year since we were uh sworn in, and so it's come really quickly, but again, um I wanna thank everyone here. I wanna thank the our 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 folks that are uh watching at from home. I hope that the community sees uh the passion that we all have for our city and how we're working hard for you uh through community cleanups and uh programs and services to uh, you know, many other endeavors, and so I just wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a prosperous year, and uh look forward to more uh from the council and especially where it comes to housing and legislation and policy that is uh meaningful to the residents of Hawthorne, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Montero.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor, um again, I would say, you know, great meeting, uh very thoughtful discussion. I wanna thank the constituent for listening to us and to to voice their opinion, so uh thank you for joining us tonight. Um I just wanna say that um the city is going in the right direction, right, because um we started to put the pieces together. Uh we see uh how staff were happy at the appreciation lunch for for holiday. Uh so again, thank you, Mr. Vaughn, thank you, Mr. Kim, and all the head departments to come together to celebrate, you know, holidays and also to show staff appreciation, because that they are the pillars of our of our city, and uh and we come, you know, we're part-time, we don't have no 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 salaries. Uh like some people thinking that we have salaries, but we don't have salaries for the council, it's just a stipend, okay? Um I wanna say again, thank you to uh Senator Bradford for coming coming in. I wanna thank the Ted from the Clean Power Alliance, I wanna thank uh Dools and Jonathan to come and talk to us about homeless, because like we said, you know, uh we did saw an increase in homeless, but now it has decreased a little bit in our city, so there is a little pocket here, pocket there. So it's it's like we're making strive, you know, because when they reach out to uh hundred thirty-five participants, so this mean they they out there doing outreach, and and again, to our Hawthorne PD for helping them out. So thank you to all the department head, because it's been a year, it's been a great year for us. Again, Thanksgiving, you know, it was strange because, you know, since Thanksgiving, we didn't have a meeting, but uh it was a lot of things happened in the community, like Ms. English uh mentioned. You know, we gave thousands of dollars into in in gift card for Tard, uh not Tard, for uh Food for Less and Ralph and uh Superior, uh we give thousands of dollars to. and uh Superior. Uh, we give thousands of dollars to our community to go buy um turkey or meat or something for them to put on the table for Thanksgiving. So I hope everybody did have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thanks for those who contribute, especially uh all the uh uh organizations and nonprofit that had done business out there and have contribute for us to be able to give gift card to the to the families. Again, the same thing is gonna happen for this Christmas. We're gonna have thousands of dollars given to the people in gift cards, especially, you know, for Target, you know, the children's gonna get twenty dollar gift card each to go buy their own toys with the parents. So and I hope they target they shop at Target in Hawthorne on one twenty, not on okay? Um, I want to say that, eh, you know, uh, myself, uh Vaughn, our city manager, and and Council uh David Patterson, we uh we uh attend a conference in Las Vegas. Uh, it was about two days uh about bringing business to Hawthorne, okay? And we did talk to a lot of people, restaurants, hotels, retails. And the notion that it's still out there that uh where is Hawthorne? Uh, you guys are not friendly city. Uh, it's hard to do business with you. Uh, all those stigma have to be, we have to take those away, okay? We have to make things easy. We have to make the process, you know, see uh uh condition use permit, licensing. We have to streamline those things because we have reputation of being a to uh uh a tough city to deal with. So we have to stop that. Uh, and some people do want to come to Hawthorne. Uh, some restaurants wants to talk about coming to Hawthorne. And there is a challenge that also because when they see the demographic and especially the median income, right? Some of these restaurants, they want to see that median income is fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand uh a year for middle income. And 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 we we almost there because Hawthorne is 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 close is close to that fifty thousand. Uh, but we need to 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 send a message that Hawthorne is open for business. We will do any, everything we can in our power to bring new business, special restaurant, more hotels, okay, ma- retails. By the same time, we need to make sure that I, you know, I agree, beautify Hawthorne is one of the first step. We can do that. You know, clean up all these front store with the with the with the cardboard. We can, we don't want to see that. That is why we need to put our dollar, to revive Hawthorne, Special Hawthorne Boulevard, Al Segundo Boulevard, French Shot, uh Imperial, Rose Graham, Inglewood. We need to focus on 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 that. And I think that is a chance for us to do it. Because I think Hawthorne is, as I said, we were in the right track. And now, you know, we thanks Vaughn's, you know, to to bring more staff to our city hall because, you know, and we know this, you know, we skeleton crew, you know, from the building and safety to the planning, to the licensing, to, you know, even the city manager office. Everybody, even the the city attorney, we have a lot of opens out there. So people come to Hawthorne, you can, we know, we have good benefits, good salaries, and we are open for business. And that note, I'll say, you know, I want everybody to have a safe holiday because remember, now we have a new strength of this virus. So be safe out there. Tomorrow, everybody have to use mask indoors because the state of California have declared that until from tomorrow until January fifteen, everybody have to use mask indoors, regardless of your vaccination status. So be safe out there. Have a wonderful holiday. Merry Christmas. Uh, happy Kwanzaa, happy Hanukkah. And and I wish twenty twenty-two, we will get rid of this virus. And Hawthorne, like uh Mr. Gregory Fowler said, we are doing financially, we're doing well because when you saw those first quarter report, uh, we we have not seen a decline in sales tax or T O T. So that's a good news. So God bless and good night.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. One of first, thank the community for turn tuning in and especially calling and sending emails, just communicating what's important to you um to the council and sharing it with the rest of the city. It's always super important. Want to thank staff for all you guys do. Um, yeah, just definitely want to appreciate you. A couple of things, comment on 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 Mr. Montero said, uh, we did attend the ICSC conference uh the other week. And uh it was valuable. You know, it wasn't as big and robust as previous ones. You know, these conferences are slowly kind of coming back. But we did have an opportunity to talk to some hotel developers, uh our franchisors, Hilton Marriott and some of these other brands. And um, you know, get some of their feedback and and tell you know, how can we attract more of these these businesses to our city, which really made me think about a few things. I know that we want to see more of these 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 major hotel brands down Imperial Avenue. And so what I would like to ask that um we create something that can attract them. Um, perhaps a um, a a uh for a large brand name hotel chain, maybe two hundred rooms or more that open up down Imperial, that they automatically get a uh 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 T O T kind of split agreement that we've done with some of these other hotels uh in the city. Um, right? And and even look at what other type of things we can do to kind of incentivize the type of development that we want to see in the parts of the city that we want to see. Um, they're all even and and even with what I said, talking about these large hotels, I know some of them were really hurt during the pandemic. Um, I know many hotels throughout the country kind of closed down, operating at twenty, thirty percent occupancy. And so uh any of our our larger hotels that that were, you know, having good partners in the city, um, if we can look in in work out maybe some type of concession, T O T concession with them. Um, right, to kind of, you know, help them out, given the fact that they had to kind of incur, you know, some, assuming that they incurred some loss during the pandemic, uh maybe we can provide some concessions for them. Um, and uh uh, you know, I'll leave it to you to kind of come up with the details, Mr. City Manager and City Attorney. Um, look at some notes. Couple more things that I want to talk about. Oh, we talked about monies for for businesses, right? I think I I I'm I'm saddened to hear that such a small percentage of our Hawthorne businesses taking advantage of the federal monies that are out there. Um, so I just want to remind everybody that the S B A E I D L loan and grant application is still available. Uh, they're still accepting applications through the end of this year. Uh, definitely try to find, you know, i- if somebody's not comfortable with that process, try to find some support, somebody that can help them out. Um, because there's definitely a lot of monies, a lot of monies on the table uh for for all businesses, whether you're you're self-employed business or had, you know, five, four hundred and ninety-nine employees. Uh, there's a lot of money out there for you. Um, I would like to put a couple of things on the next agenda to discuss. One being a first-time homebuyer program. I know we've done those in the past and I believe we have that currently in place. I'd like to discuss that with the council. And then also, um, maybe a a a different type of rent relief program we can discuss. Um, we know we had, we had to my friend community talk about rent's still going up, but still a lot of people are having a lot of financial challenges. And and while they're not necessarily behind on their rent, they may be having trouble kind of meeting their rent obligations. And so maybe we can discuss uh some kind of supplement that we can provide, you know, those who qualify and apply, kind of support them over Christmas next year as we're coming out of the the pandemic. So it's just something to put on the agenda so we can all discuss and get everybody's uh feedback on. Um, and just and lastly, I want to, I want to make sure that as a city, we are prioritizing um the upkeep and proper management of the units that we own, the low-income units that we do own. Uh, I know there's conversation about us um contributing money and spending money for uh low-income development service veterans. But from my observation, the units that we do own uh have fallen in disrepair. And I think we should make sure we, we aren't guilty of not taking care of the residential units that we own. Um, you know, in the way that we complain about other landlords. So we need to, you know, of course, make sure that we um, we set the right kind of example of taking care of our own units, our multifamily properties that we own, and then be in a good position to go out and hold uh these other landlords accountable. Cause I know there are a number of landlords out there that you know, they're not, they're not making it a priority to keep their places um up to date or or clean or um you know, making sure the bulk items are handled appropriately. So I want to first make sure that, you know, we we're taking care of home first. And then, of course, hold um some of these other landlords accountable as well. Um, outside of that, want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Merry New Year. Um, hope you have an opportunity to spend some time with your your family and loved ones. Hope you're safe. Um, I was, I saw my dentist the other day over at Snyder Dental. Uh, and my dentist was saying that uh, this is what she said, I haven't verified it, but we've had s- almost more or if not more COVID deaths in twenty twenty-one in United States ver- than we did in in twenty twenty. Uh, which tells me that um, you know, we still need to be safe. And so I definitely hope that everybody chooses to get vaccinated. And whether you choose to or not, I I hope that you choose to be safe and protect yourself and your family. Um, I don't know about you guys, there's been a number of deaths in my family over the last two years. Um, some COVID related and some not. But, you know, nobody likes to to lose a loved one. So, you know, it's definitely be safe out there.
Thank you, sir. Thank and thank you to both you and Councilmember Montero for reporting out on that uh on that uh meeting that you guys had on the ca- on the conference. Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you. So first, um, I would like to um direct the city attorney to provide the council with a presentation describing the advantages and disadvantages of Hawthorne becoming a charter city versus remaining a general law city. It is my understanding that as a charter city, the city has more legal authority to be independent from state law if the issue concerns a municipal affair. I think it is worth a discussion at least. Um, if a change is voted on here, the voters would still have to make the final decision. But I would like to have that discussion here um as to the advantages um and disadvantages of Hawthorne becoming a charter city versus remaining a general law city. And I want to let everyone know that Hawthorne Business Expo twenty twenty-two is on the horizon. We are working hard to make sure that um we we're getting every what everything together. This is for our businesses. We had a discussion on businesses today. We're going to try and try and ameliorate some of those issues with uh with some of our seminars. We've got seminars on how to start your business in Hawthorne, practical cyber liability for your business, apprenticeship and employee training support at no cost for your business, how to do business with Los Angeles World Airports, supercharging your social media, how to go from likes to sales, four steps for building an unforgettable brand presence while optimizing for search, those as uh uh be becoming um um becoming proficient on the using the website, insurance requirements for your small business, and financing your business. So we've got eight seminars on January twenty twenty uh fifth in the afternoon for um what we hope will uh feature uh, uh, we have experts that are going to be talking about how businesses can be educated about what they need to be a top performer in this changing environment. Our panel discussion in the morning will be on revise, rebuild, and reconnect, where business owners will be discussing how they face the challenges of the pandemic. And um then we will have our, on day two, will be our all-day business exhibition, which is the most popular part of the uh Business Expo. And this will be on the exhibition floor in the sunroom. Um, our expo board expo floor will give uh businesses a tremendous networking opportunity and and allow them to meet and greet the public and show everyone the value of their products and services. So this is January twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two, coming up really quickly. Um, it's free to the public. And those of you who want to exhibit, uh, those those of Hawthorne residents or any or Hawthorne businesses, doesn't have to be Hawthorne businesses, but if you wish to exhibit, we need to have your information by January third so that we you can be properly registered. So you register on our website, HawthorneBusinessExpo dot com. And um, we are, we will be observing county protocols on COVID nineteen. Uh, masks will be required. That's all we will be requiring, but we will ask people to wear masks. And um, other than that, I just want to say to our staff, to our department heads, to our police department, to everyone who has worked so hard to make this city a better place, to our council, fellow council members, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, whatever it is you celebrate. May your ha- may your holiday be holiday be a great one. Enjoy this long time with your loved ones. And um, very, very Happy New Year. Thank you.
Are there any go-banks at all?
Yes, I want to do a co- a go-back because I actually, I want to thank the Hawthorne Police Department. I want to thank all the other organizations, Northgate Market, everyone that contributed and assisted with the Operation Gobble. I just wanted to acknowledge you and uh thank you again for always being there. This is not the first time that the Hawthorne Police Department, the H O P A and those that uh support our community has stepped up. So thank you all and all those other groups and organizations. Um, appreciate you as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So I guess we reached the end of our meeting. Uh, it was a good lengthy meeting, but there was a lot of things that we needed to cover because it's the end of the year. We won't be seeing you until next year, which is in January in a few weeks. Uh, but uh we definitely as a councils and the city of Hawthorne staff, we we wish you all a happy holidays, uh happy Hanukkah, uh happy Kwanzaa and uh Merry Christmas. You know what? Something that I just really wanted to bring forward, it was, it was just not that long ago that people were afraid to uh to say Merry Christmas because it was, you know, there's just something about not um referring to the two purposes of the thing. It's not a happy holiday. It's not a holiday. It's Merry Christmas. And as Christians, many of us celebrate the birth of Jesus Christ. So try to be politically correct with a lot of these things, you know, out there. I I think we're losing a lot of our traditions. A lot of our, you know, cultural traditions, where we, you know, we're becoming very generic, very uh community. And luckily, there's people who are uh starting to pronounce Merry Christmas. Or if you celebrate Kwanzaa, just addressing it for what it is. And uh I'm really proud of all the Hawthorne residents that are not afraid to do that and not afraid to stick to cultural traditions. There's a little bit to say about old-fashioned type of living and uh traditions and keeping those traditions going. Okay? So, thank you. Um, and then, you know, speaking about that, something like Mayor Pro Tim said with her uh decorating the uh, you know, the the public right, the the front, the front part of a person's house with flower pots or flowers, et cetera. That's just bringing a little bit more of a uh nice hometown touch to our community, dressing it up and encouraging on behalf of the city. Um, I know we're, we spend a lot of time uh trying to come down on people for things that they shouldn't do. We should just start pushing for things that they they should do just to encourage the, you know, the beautification of our city. So that's one of the steps in. Um, it's the end of the year and I want to just let every single one of my colleagues know that I appreciate them. We've been working great as a team. I'll start off with staff. You know, you guys have been doing a great job. Skeleton staff, I know we're saying um and you've been able to get things done. So all our staff here in City Hall and the Police Department, thank you so much from all of us, from the community. Uh, and then for my colleagues, I'm starting from Mr. The Treasurer who's uh joined us recently, you know, you know. You give us the reports, you're looking at the numbers, you have the training, um, you're getting feedback from us, you're giving us feedback. So we really appreciate you. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, uh, thank you for your, you know, being proactive. Never have I seen a city clerk as proactive as you, and that's the bottom, that's the truth. So I really appreciate what you're doing there. Um, and especially, you know, with the internships, you know, uh those students are getting exposure here. You know, with your oversight and the oversight of your staff. And that's an experience that's valuable. You've contributed great greatly in a different capacity that we've never seen. So thank you so much. Councilwoman Angie Race English, thank you for joining us. I think we're working very harmoniously, I I think. And there was a time where we kind of like, you know, did a whole like, you know. You know, whatever, but, you know, look, look where we're at, look, look at all the, look at where we're at now as, you know, as a team. And you're part of a team and essential part of our team. And that's why, uh, we trusted you enough to, you know, to do certain things. Trusted you to be on that ad hoc committee and in other capacities and trust some of your, uh, trust your judgment on a lot of things that you've been bringing for. So thank you for contributing in that way. So.
Got it. I got it. I, you know, I'm gonna boast, I gotta thank the ten thousand four hundred and twenty-six voters for that.
Okay, of course. So we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And then, uh, Councilmember Patterson, thank you for joining us, uh, as well. Um, I just wanted to, I appreciate you. You're looking at things, uh, I don't, we're pragmatist, I don't know if that's a compliment or if it's just like, you look at things pragmatically. And, uh, you also look at, you know, the financial aspect. So you say, hey, is this good for the city? How much is it going to cost us? Is it realizable? And you ask, basically, you ask, uh, very good essential questions that get us to a conclusion. And some of the questions you have asked have guided me towards a direction. Where I was in an opposite direction, I ended up going into a different direction because of your insights. So thank you for being part of the council, sir. And, you know, I supported you to come up here, so thank you. Thanks for joining us. Councilmember Montero, uh, your your experience is so invaluable, uh, is is so valuable, you know, to the city council. With the nonprofit experience you have, um, your years here in the city, you know, your life experiences, man. That's, it it contributes a lot to what we do. And, uh, you know, I just thank you for, you know, balancing everything out, giving your insight, being vocal. And, you know, just, just bringing that added flavor to the city council and thought. And you have the resources too, so that's really awesome. Mayor Pro Tim, I think I've served with, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Valentine and Councilwoman Angie Raise English the longest. But, you know, I've gotten to know you, Mayor Pro Tim, and you've contributed greatly to city council. Your focuses, um, have been many, but I I can highlight the art, the artistic aspect. Let's bring, make this an artistic destination for artists. Let's beautify our city. Let's help businesses. So these are themes that all my council member colleagues have talked about. And, uh, you've been focusing on the business, with the Business Expo, so that's been, uh, something that's, uh. Very valuable to the city. So thank you so much. Oh, and I wanted to remember, uh, I started, the person I started off with on the council was Councilwoman English. Remember, we got elected at the same time, two thousand nine, so I kind of think I know you the longest in a sense.
And we did it again, right?
Yeah, we did it again, so.
Yeah. We're going down this route, you know, I think it's only fair that, you know, we make mention, uh, you know, of you. For your leadership in that middle seat, it's important for all of us. Not only that, it's important for the residents to see that we're col- working collectively. To move the city forward in spite of ourselves and how we might feel about one another, you know, all feelings put aside. I think the business of the people is what we're trying to manage and move forward. And I think this group here, the collection of minds and ideas and and projects, uh, is exactly what the Hawthorne residents want. I look forward to the end of that horrible box across the street and I just wanna be able to, you know. Work really hard and aggressively, uh, come twenty twenty-two because, uh, unless we do that. We're gonna fall behind and all these other cities that are building out around us are gonna get ahead. And we're still gonna be saying, no, 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 we need to stop that momentum. We need to stop it. We need to start being more aggressive and saying that. It's, you know, full speed ahead.
But, but all that aside, all that aside also, I just think that this council has been working really well together, okay? There's always all the politics and all the dynamics that kind of screws things up because there's just people out there that try to like inject. Bad, uh, like malice, they have malicious intent and trying to like, you know. But I think we've come ahead because we've, uh, risen above all that. And we've participated by communicating to each other. There's some people here that I have not, didn't talk to at some point. And now I made an effort to talk to them and they're talking, you guys are talking to me. We've talked amongst each other. We're able to communicate. And just like any relationship, they say the word, communication, communication. And it's so essential that we just talk, listen, we're not always gonna, uh, the sooner we know that communication is important. And that we're not always gonna agree on everything and we come to accept that. And make an effort to agree on most things. And at the end, we agree on what? Ninety-nine percent of the things that we put on the thing, we agree on. So.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, uh, acknowledge, uh, our new city manager and our new attorney, right? Because they took a lot of challenge. So we brought them into a midst of a lot of challenge and 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 stuff that, uh. And they took, let's say, the bull by the horns, right? And, um, and so far, you know, I'm very pleased. They have done outstanding job for these past nine months. They've been in, was interim and then now official, uh, so I'm pretty sure that they will lead us into twenty twenty-two. And then, like I said, when we bring more staff to City Hall and and Hawthorne will shine brighter than 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 we are right now. But we will.
Uh, this is the place of my birth, this is where I wanna die, so, um, you know, I'm cool with that.
Don't say that.
I'm halfway there, I'm fifty, I'm looking to live towards a hundred, you know, I'm trying to do everything, I'm trying to do everything I can.
Let me just also acknowledge, uh, you know, Chief Ishi for his leadership with the police department and our, and our police force. Please be safe to all of you, all of our police officers and even those that are gonna be working during the Christmas season and and New Years. And, you know, we, uh, commend you for, you know, your, uh, efforts and more importantly, just, uh, securing and assuring. That our city is, uh, in a good place and safe for the residents that live here, play and work. So I wanna acknowledge you, cause I know Chief, you're still online. And to everybody, Eric, from all the Zooms and all these meetings and pictures and, you know, to Alan. Public Works, I mean, Akbar, Mr. Peter Wang, um, Guido, the airport, oh my goodness, we need the airport, you guys. We need the airport, Felice, uh, Diana, Carmen, Kimberly, Ms. Kimberly Mack, all of you, Mr. Armstrong. Uh, Greg McLean, all of you are essential to, you know, this city, to the city, so.
Don't forget the park and rec.
Rec and parks, all of our, all of our staff there.
Yeah, cause they have done outstanding.
Yeah, our janitorial staff that comes in and, you know, takes out our our trash. Everybody's important, everybody's important. I just wanna make sure that we're acknowledging that here in this last council meeting. I think it's important that everybody be acknowledged. And so. City Police Office, our City Treasurer's Office, everybody, uh, is important to, um, the operations of this city. Because at the end of the day, we are a business. We are a business and we have to work collectively as a business.
And as a team, we have to set the example, right?
Yep. I sure hope everybody's could do in their customer service, um, you know.
Yeah. And then, uh, I don't want this to be the year in review type of session here, but. The one I think I do wanna address is, we heard today, we as a city council have addressed, are addressing and have addressed the homeless issue. We have the proof, you you know, we see it, you drive down the streets. They're not, there's no homeless there in in some of the areas that we would expect because they have been found housing. And they've been given hope because of what we've done. And you remember when there were so many, there was a couple of detractors that always would come and speak. Where are they now? They, you know. So, uh, con- congratulations to all those involved, um, addressing that. And, uh, yeah, so that's that. Alright, so have, um, have a Merry Christmas on behalf of the city council. Your mayor, your city council member colleagues, from the staff, uh, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah. And, uh, this meeting is adjourned at ten oh seven. Have a, we'll see you next year.
See you on the twenty-first, twenty-third, twenty-fourth.